Pledge. Praise God, our heavenly Father, we thank you, Lord, for this day, and we thank you for your many, many blessings in life. We thank you, Lord, for watching over us and helping us. We thank you, Lord, for being one of our first responders. We ask for protection upon them. We ask you to be with our employees at the courthouse, be with all of our employees at the county, Lord, and just put a hand of guidance and protection over them. Now, heavenly Father, we ask that you'll be with those who are sick and lost loved ones, and, Lord, we ask you to be with us this evening here at this meeting. Give us the knowledge and wisdom that we need, Lord, to make the best decisions that we might go forth as a county, and we give it to you, boy, in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen.
Yep.
I pledge allegiance to the republic of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, three members is present along with several of the people coming into the meeting. We call the meeting to order. Appreciate it. Are you going to think they had?
Yes, fountain fire halls invite to the banquet has already passed. American Legion, a thank you card. Um, under new business, the assessor had requested a letter to the state to authorize changes. The sheriff added a part-time law clerk and this weapon transition. It was something else to.
What was that again, ma'am?
Those the weapon transition and the part-time law clerk, but there was something else.
Baylord.
Baylord.
It's, of course, pretty on there.
Oh, okay.
Okay, um, I'm sure there's other things I forgot. There's been a lot going on, so I hope that's it.
You hear motion to approve the agenda. And I approve that also. Minutes you.
Say you have minutes when my office is back together. You have minutes when my office is back together.
When we have, okay, so we'll take a day just to have me to have minutes.
Yeah.
I understand. That's quite a long deal. That movement is quite a north ear. I'll tell you that. All right, correspondence here. Office of the sheriff, this is monthly report. I'm going to kind of do these fast like because we've got a good bit coming up soon. Western Union direction, Department of Corrections, Rehabilitation, uh, excuse me, I get to the jail invoice. Last month of December was thirty-three thousand, three hundred and twenty-eight dollars and twenty-five cents for our regional jail bill. What's that?
You needed these leases added to the agenda then.
We probably should. There's, yeah, approved, yeah.
So under the parks will add leases.
Okay. All right, and if the, uh, Fountain Fire Department with their annual banquet, we was there Saturday night, that's already passed. American Legion, post thirty-one, thank you card.
Yeah, that's it.
All these signatures. Oh, the sheriff funeral.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. All right, I didn't turn it.
Actually, it's the sheriff. Yeah, it's the sheriff.
To the sheriff, all right.
Oh, because it checks his road share.
The assessor, I got an email from the State Tax Department about jails.
To make authorization for changes?
Maybe. Yes, that, okay, perfect.
Okay, sure.
Yeah, this was the donation he gave to the boys and girls.
Girl state.
Well, the American Legion, but it wasn't the local American Legion. American Legion thirty-one. You guys approved that donation.
Yeah, I can't remember much about it. Okay, good deal. All right, going with that whole, whole business, board appointments. Uh, if we have any, I don't think to do, oh, do we, do you know, are we down on the parking wreck?
I don't even have any.
Uh, well, should I ask Cody in there, did you?
I think they're leaving far.
I think we're, maybe we'll catch reports here. Update on the courthouse annex?
Yeah, I've got a lot of stuff. So just along by you. Okay, so the first thing we'll talk about is we have to do an official change order. To be clear, you all have already approved these expenses separately, um, but the full change order form will be coming for a sign, for signs, for signature. Um, the total change orders are in the amount of one hundred and thirty-five thousand, three hundred and seventy-six dollars and ten cents. Um, seventy-seven thousand, two hundred and thirty-nine dollars for the second circuit judge suite, which eighty percent of that is covered by grant funds that we will be reimbursed for. Um, emergency lights are fourteen hundred, annex exterior wall metal, thirty-three thousand, eight hundred fifty-five dollars and thirty-two cents. We discussed that at the last meeting. Uh, the courthouse shelving for Lauren shelving, um, eighteen thousand, four hundred twenty-two dollars and twenty-five cents. Um, then there is another one for some HVAC relocation that had to happen for forty-four fifty-eight. So it's one thirty-five, three seventy-six, ten. To the best of my knowledge, all of this has been discussed through, um, building commission meetings, and this, it's just we've got to sign the official form.
What was the total?
Uh, one thirty-five, three seventy-six, ten.
This is change order what? What number?
Six. And when we get the form, I do it all through DocuSign, so he was going to get the official AI form done, but if you guys can go and approve that change order, so we can get what it says, because USDA has to approve as well.
Wanted to be anything?
Yeah, it needs to be.
I hear motion to approve that change order. I make a motion with very change orders.
This was all pretty, already approved, right? They were, but it's the document itself, the president wanted to sign off, but no, well, but yes, it needs to, yeah, yes.
I approve that also. Okay.
Yeah, I've got a lot more stuff. Um, the next thing is we need graphics at the courthouse annex. For like all the elected officials divorcing stuff. So I talked to Lauren and the sheriff and the assessor. Lauren liked the old font and style, and everyone was fine with that. So this is the workup of that to label all of the doors, and then it acts off, which takes on a window because he doesn't have a door with glass. That is a total of thirty-six dollars and seventy-five cents per door. So thirty-five.
So much.
It's like a hundred and fifty bucks, thirty-six, seventy-five per door.
Oh, total.
Yes, yes, yes. Um, thirty-six dollars and seventy-five cents, not thirty-six hundred and seventy-five dollars.
Are you going to get, uh, Christian maybe?
Yeah, when she gets moved, we'll worry about her. I was just trying to get a label for now. Um, the front door of the courthouse annex, get it printed the same way as the old door. It is one hundred and thirty-eight dollars and sixty cents. It'll look identical to the door over on the courthouse, because it'll say EMX. But it'll list all the stuff so we can take that paper off of there. The other stuff I have checked with those, they want the workups.
Um, does Ron get a special one for her door?
No, just the elect.
I can credit me one.
Yeah. Um, the only other things, and these are optional, those we really need to do. But they can put the new seal on the sign out front for ninety-nine dollars. A new seal on the door out front for thirty-five dollars, and then replace these two wall graphics for thirty-one dollars each. Um, those again are optional, just because we have the new seal, but the ones upstairs we do need to do, because that's up to you all. That's right there.
How much are these? Thirty, thirty-five?
Thirty-one.
Thirty-one. What do you guys want to read? I think that was the whole, I mean, everything's match up. And it's not like we're going to be changing the seal again anyway, anytime soon, so I hope. No, we're not.
Yeah.
How much is total of all that?
I, I don't have it added up. I haven't given it to me all the card. So it's a hundred, a hundred and thirty-five plus seventy, so two hundred.
Probably three hundred dollars.
Yeah, you're looking at three to four. No, it's about five, because
Five hundred dollars.
This building is three.
This building.
This, no, this building is ninety-nine.
Where's my gun? What, just tell me.
Okay, thirty, ninety-nine, seventy-five.
Just one.
That's for the, and that's for the sign out front.
Hundred dollars, okay.
Yep, thirty-five.
Okay.
And then thirty-one times two.
That's sixty-two and thirty-five, a little over two hundred dollars.
For this building. And then over there, it's a hundred and thirty-eight for the front door.
Okay.
And then thirty-seven dollars for each off, per office.
Approximately four hundred. Well, no, with each office, you're looking at four offices. You're looking at about five hundred dollars.
Right, for everything. Yeah, for all of it.
I make a motion, we, yeah, accept each door, what are they called?
The. Graphics.
And second. End this evening. Sorry, now prove that option. Okay, that's good.
I'm not done. Um, we, a couple of things. So at the building commission meeting, we were talking about the previous sewer problems, the smells, some of that stuff. Um, and Commissioner Whitlock came, and he was kind of, um, interested to possibly maybe have. We don't know where the sewer lines run under the courthouse. Like, we have an idea, but we don't know where they run for sure, and we've not had them smoke tested. Um, so we talked about doing like an exploratory camera review and a smoke review of all of the existing sewer lines in the courthouse, so that while things are torn up, if there are things we should go ahead and replace, we can do a few, say anything you can, but.
I just feel like we need to make sure we do it right, now that everything's got it out of the courthouse.
Yes.
There are cameras with, to detect the lines that have a detector in it where the companies can find where the head of it.
Yeah, that's what.
Yeah, we use, that's what we're talking about. Yeah.
Yeah. I just think that you do. Did you get a price or a year or any?
I, I didn't know.
It was five hundred dollars for me to do part, our, the ministry center.
And I wasn't sure who to go to for the snow. So that's like.
There aren't anything D and D, that's it.
I don't know. Tom seemed to think maybe RK and K would, but I, I have no idea. Because even if we, because Jason mentioned, like, even if we could just, when they run that through mark the floors where stuff is by itself, that would be handy, because we really don't know where it comes. Like, we have an idea, but we don't truly know.
Yeah.
Um, so you're going to take responsibility for that and reach out to some people about it, or what do you want to?
Yeah, if you guys are okay with that, I'm good with it.
I'm a hundred percent okay.
The, the reason is, before we said all that new carpet and everything in there, and then we got to take it all up.
Okay, and then last.
Do we need a motion to go ahead and do the exploratory cameras to vote for you or?
I think a Dutch expression, yeah, I don't know what bear price is. That's, that's up to you all, though. The two will be, I think you're going to be surprised, well, it's not in construction over there. Like, if you just keep.
Well, I know, man, I know you want to have, I know you want to have several. They, they bet through them a couple of events on the way. Yeah, I don't know what was mentioned.
If they are third, you will get others.
I know we'll have several hundred dollars and run the camera through and locate everything.
I think it was five hundred when they did that little section of Stanley Court for us.
Yeah.
But they also were, well, that was with fixing a toilet, putting a repair flange in and.
We use. Yeah. Just check them next.
Okay, and then the final thing, and this is optional, um, I had a cable, so we've ran our own cabling through the courthouse over the last however many years, and it's a train wreck at best. The Supreme Court is willing to re-cable the courthouse, the first two floors. They obviously won't do the third floor. Um, but they're willing to re-cable the first two floors because it'll be Supreme Court offices, and I'm not even sure that it's cat five either. We have it there right now. I think it might just be cat five. They are willing to do that. However, the problem is, there is a ton of existing cabling in that ceiling. Now, it's not. It's really bad. Um, I had a cabling vendor come last week and take a look at it, um, and he said there is no way he could tell us for sure what it's going to cost, because it is a disaster, and it's not like we can just send maintenance to start ripping stuff out. But he quoted fourteen thousand dollars, um, to rip the old cabling out of the building. Um, and then we don't have to pay for new, because Supreme Court will be doing it, but like, the phone has to stay, the fire alarm has to stay, a lot of security camera stuff has to stay. So you can't just get up in there and start ripping whatever. They've got to tone and locate stuff all over. So yes and no. The way I plan to network the third floor, we're going to change some things up, like we'll probably run a fiber to a single switch up there for them. But first two floors, but basement is what really is just a total disaster.
That courthouse is a mess.
And I know it's a lot of money, but again, it's one of those things that like.
Right now, so.
And that cable vendor, I met them, because I didn't have a cable vendor, which is how we ended up using P three for so much stuff, but I met them through Global, because they came and punched down some stuff for us. And, um, they did a good job at it. Global trusts them and have used them in a bunch of buildings, and he seems to be a pretty smart guy. I took him up to not once, I'm going to put it for that later, real.
But they're going to be able to select which wires.
That's why it's so expensive, because they're going to tone all the wires, find out where they are, and selectively pull out the crap that doesn't need to be there anymore. Because like, if we pull out the phone, it'll cost us fortune to re, rerun all the phone cabling that we just spent a hundred and some thousand dollars to put in. So it's got like, it's a pretty careful process. The cabling for the phone was not a hundred thousand. Phone system was that much, but that included.
Even if you look at my office now, all the wires just laying around, because every time we need some, they just ran the cable, because they didn't know where the other one came out. So every time we needed a new cable, they just ran it.
And we're relocating all of the network equipment down there into a server room, which is Jill's old file room. So Supreme Court's going to run from there, but we're just going to be running over, I mean, there are bundles of cable this, this thick in that ceiling that no one knows what they do.
They're just hanging there.
Yeah, everywhere. They're everywhere. It's a mess.
Doesn't come outside. What did, we got a lot of money in here a couple.
It wouldn't be part of the project. It'd be a separate.
Post about the building commission doesn't have anything like.
No, no, because it's not. This isn't a USDA thing.
You know, but we need to do it.
I mean, we don't, to be, we don't have to do it, but it's one of those do it right kind of things.
Now would be the time to do it, if we're going to do it. In twenty years, we're all going to be blamed because we didn't do it the first time.
I'll blame the nude demonstration.
If it's anything like the jail, you'll pay more having somebody run the stuff that you want to run than what you, that's what we run into, if you all remember. They got in ours, and they're like, y'all crazy, but we can't put yourself in here, so we ended up taking a bunch of them ourselves, but we was cutting it all. If it's anything like ours was over the last thirty years, I don't know what yours is like over the last hundred fifty, but it's a mess.
Right, it's a total mess.
We're not going to do it right.
I definitely agree.
I make a motion, we pay the fourteen thousand, then the cable, old cable is removed.
I'll second. Jerry, we're taking donations.
I'll prove that.
You cut me a bad time, I know.
Yeah, that's right. It's a service. It's not, it would be the twenty-five thousand dollar threshold, because it's a project. It's not a, okay, and then last thing. Um, the okay, so the first floor judges suite, you all know that several months ago, I came in and said the air conditioner took a, went bad on the first floor. Um, called Duckworth, ordered mini splits for the second floor, and when we said when we got to the first floor, we would deal with that. So, um, we're, we're at that, dealing with that. Um, the first floor, they're doing all of that work, but we either have to do, we're going to have to put mini splits in or a new furnace. I spoke to Tom and Jeremiah and Zach today, and B Mac is going to quote us. But we are going to have to do something on that first floor. You guys have approved the funds for the second floor. But we're going to have to do something with that first floor. I don't have numbers for you today. We're expecting probably, we need five heads. So we're expecting around fifteen thousand dollars. Um, but then, yes. Here's the question I need to know now. So they have started demolition down there. There is presently a furnace closet, um, if you want to call it that. But if we are doing mini splits, we don't need that closet anymore, and that can be removed while they're there. So our options and what you, you don't have to decide the, we have to know whether or not we're going to put a new furnace, like put a new traditional unit in, or if we're going to do many splits. I love many splits personally, um, and like going in that direction, because furnaces are just too complex when you've got five people sharing the space and the thermostat's in one place and everybody. I think you're probably looking at a very similar cost.
Your heat, your air, and your dehumidifier, which really helps down there, too.
Right, and so what, the reason I need to know today, if you guys want to be okay with doing many splits versus a regular furnace, is because it's not going to cost us anything for them to rip that furnace out of there now, and just go ahead and have that space open.
Jared, didn't we put a new furnace, do a grant in there a few years ago?
You're saying the boiler?
Yeah, we did some work. And we did the courthouse air conditioner a couple of months ago, the grid there.
If we got grants for that, I thought.
They did. The boiler. Because I think we're aware it did, did work for that.
Yeah.
Can we get a grant for this? Seventy-five thousand.
Um, the application's not open until August, and Cody's hoping to be in there in April. So unless he goes to summer without air conditioning, probably not.
Open, so that's a big.
Are you talking about our own space?
Yeah.
Yes.
And it leaks, that's, we had service faster in there, what, four or five times?
Yes.
So again, it's none of my business, but that's, that's a major problem.
Well, that furnace doesn't even work. It's completely bad. Yeah, but the, the question is.
We're putting another furnace in there. Which comparison of the call?
I don't truly know, because we just had the, like, they just tore it out yesterday.
Probably won't be that much different.
I can't imagine. I would imagine. The, the mini splits are going to be about fifteen. What we paid ten or eleven for the air conditioner in Portland. But it was just an air conditioner, too.
What is good about many splits is you can, each free can be adjusted to a temperature.
Right.
So right now, we just need to make a motion. While I really go.
Yeah, well.
I'll make a motion, we go with many. We're second.
I second you.
Okay, many. And then I'll bring those prices to you.
Just give them to Jerry.
No, no, fifteen total.
Fifteen thousand total.
Yeah, oh, yeah, you're not looking at a substantial cost. No, not fifteen per head, fifteen total.
One, one that off there.
Yes, yeah. So, um, what I'm going to do is wait to get the price from B Mac before I call Zopworth or anyone, because we know what it should be.
That's what it has to do with me. Yes, and this verbal stuff just doesn't fly.
Well, and we, the judge's meeting still isn't done, and somebody's going to see that again. And that's a profit, I mean, it's be, like, it's just a constant, all in good, like, drive again. It makes it very difficult. He does an excellent job, but he's only one person, too, and that's whatever. So I'm not getting a quote from anyone else at the moment for those, because it will also be much easier if B Mac can do it, but if B Mac comes in at much more, like, if they come in at sixteen thousand, I'm going to recommend it to you, but they come in at thirty, obviously, we'll find someone else. So I asked them to have a quote to me immediately, but I also know.
You don't have enough.
Of course, they have been working on my stuff. This week, and then possibly even some next week. I still have myself down stickers in the judge's team. I started my furnace room, I started the stuff in the dairy room, I still have it in mine. You know where to put anything.
Look at it here.
I want about two hundred and thirty bucks that do not fit the vault that came from the old vault.
That is all I have. If I, I'm, I'm ninety percent sure that's all I have when we get down later.
You got a point coming up with Barbies. You want a big floor? Yeah, you want a.
All, and I copied you all on the email, you know, for your, for your report, keeping it there.
All right, Dorothy.
From here?
Yep.
Okay.
Wherever you want to go. You want to stand, set up here, sit back here, and make yourself comfortable.
Um, West Virginia Peach Festival is asking for funding for electrical, um, panels so that they can put them in our food court. Our food vendors don't have to use those file generators, and it's actually a lot safer using electric than the generators. And you don't have the, you don't have the exhaust fumes, you don't have the noise, and you get better, actually better quality food vendors. There's more of them that want to be there because of it, so we get the better food vendors for that.
And you're, you're looking for approximately four thousand, correct?
Yeah, so I got an estimate. I got more information on it, and to get three panels, this gentleman, well, Darren Puckerberger, said it's going to run close to seven to eighty thousand dollars.
Now, and I'm going to ask you, I asked you, just talk to you a little bit about this, but that will stay at the Port Ashby Fairground, so if I'm going to use Parktorec for an example, if they have Frosty Fest again, or whatever, they, this is accessible to them.
Yeah, any other festival that goes in there has access to it.
This will basically, this will be more fairground property, right?
Correct.
The fire departments. Yeah.
Uh, our master department is putting it together for us, and he's giving the pricing for the wiring, the panels to do this. But if you guys have any sources that can give discount pricing, or maybe just sell it to us a little above cost, because we're a nonprofit, that would cut it down a lot, too.
Hey, any questions?
You know, I didn't.
Yeah.
The money that's made over Peach Festival, does Mineral County gain anything from that, or does that? Where does that money go, like?
The Peach Festival itself makes enough money to cover its expenses. We're, we're not out to make money. Uh, most of the events that we put on are fundraisers. It's like the, the pet show raises money for the animal shelters. The five K run is run for food, so we raise money for the food pantries. The Peachy Bake Off raises money to raise the food pantries. So the car show raises money for the, is the Isaac Lewis House?
James, I think.
So everything we do, we want to give back to the community, so it's, we're, we're not out to get rich. We just want to pay them.
No, I was just curious. I never did hear how all that settlement off debate.
Yeah, no, we, we do an awful lot for the community, but doing this with the, the power outlets, it's, it'll bring better vendors, more vendors. Um, it makes it quieter, nicer, and then you see the layout of it. This, this year is going to explode. It's going to be a fantastic festival.
I'll make a motion and give him four thousand.
I second it.
Okay.
Prove that option. Now, will this be the total contribution this year, or you want to come and ask?
I'm not going to ask. This is just for the electrical to help with the, the festival and the fairgrounds. And it's much, thank you for getting more activities there. It's really going to benefit everybody that goes there. With some events.
Do we, do we cover the yard? The sheriff's department for that as well, overtime for any of those. The sheriff's department for that as well? Over time, towards any of those.
No. Well, about the only thing they do is track control for the spray. That was pretty much anything I did last year.
If there's a call. Didn't melt it whole work. Okay.
I'm first reading all this, August first, October third. The concert is Friday night from six to eleven, Saturday night, six to eleven. And it's gonna be packed.
This will benefit a lot of others, like Parks Direct being there and.
Parks Direct's fund.
Yeah.
Um, the high school, we're working with them to come set up a new kid zone and. And putting on things for them to raise money for all their groups.
Okay, so it's approved for you.
Thank you.
Well.
Appreciate that.
Alright, u- u- update on the bike trail and stuff.
Um, I don't think we have anything. You got anything on that? Nothing. I, um, I sent a letter to. Um, EEO about L D C F, the DM Theater, and I haven't heard back from them, but I did submit that, um. As far as Carperdale Tunnel, um, let's show all the fuck we definitely, there's a whole lot I can do at the moment. We've.
We're kinda holding back on that something, yeah.
Next time CBS requests to open up, we'll ask again, but.
Okay, uh, update on the.
Keep back bike trails and Carperdale Tunnel on the agenda?
I personally, I mean, I personally think it can come off of that's yours.
Call with it's, uh, I don't care. You don't think it can lead on there?
I mean, the tunnel's like three and a half million dollars. You must be willing to come out with that back.
About it being a state park, any other further thing?
I mean, we'll probably ask B and R again this year, but they're not interested.
If it comes up, we can always put a back home game.
They got nowhere to make sure.
Sure.
That's fine. I'll check that off and we'll just keep update on parks, the rental, uh, six, then the empty theater. And then you want to, you need to approve authorization to sign, you can produce leases and authorize the president to sign. There's, uh, the lease for Caleb Wilt, two leases for Caleb Wilt. And, um. Edwin and Nancy Keener.
What are those leases?
Being my leases.
Got it along the text. Oh, okay. I hear most of them. No, I approve that also. We'll take care of that later. Alright, uh, the CDVG building at the, uh, Health Department. Your update on that is February the tenth. Here in the commission room, they wanna meet with the, I'm assuming Regent A will be here. Uh. I know Potesta will be here and they're, they're gonna have a meeting about all the paperwork and stuff to get this started. So it's open to the public if anybody wants to come on, uh, February tenth at one o'clock.
About a pre-bid meeting or?
No, it's.
Pre-construction.
Pre-construction, not pre-bid, pre-construction. I don't know who.
Is that for the health department?
That's for the new building at the health department.
New building at the health.
Yeah, and if you get an opportunity, I don't think it's open right now, but I would encourage you to walk into the health department. You are going to be amazed at what's going on in the front. It's nothing like it used to be. It, it's really nice in there. Well, I never could figure out why they put carpet in the health plan. That doesn't make sense to me. With the diseases and stuff that's out there. It's all well. New hardwood. New flooring. I'm only gonna say hardwood, but new flooring in, really looks nice.
Yeah, wasn't that not cool?
Yeah, it looks good. Okay.
That's not it. Um, I got the official notice received from Potesta. And there is a request for drawdown, um. On the project. And it is for four thousand three hundred and fifty-one dollars this time.
What drawdown's that?
It is drawdown number.
That damn corner in that little box.
Uh, actually, I need the invoice number. So if you guys can approve that, I'll order to sign this after meeting.
So move.
Second.
And I approve that also.
That's great.
Yes. Okay.
And the blinds were ordered for courthouse annex. I'm sure at some point since last, they have been ordered up, promised the end they shipped, so they should be here soon.
Authorize the president to sign that as well.
Yes, yeah. Okay, update on, I hope you're refunding.
I don't have much to update right now. Other than you got a check. Hundred and ninety-seven thousand, that's a hundred dollars. One hundred ninety-seven thousand, twenty-eight dollars and eight cents. There's a check we got. Um, listen, boys, this is dated. January the ninth, but I think we got it one day last week.
Um. The applications. Will be open again very, very soon. Waiting to update those, that application. And, uh, make a few little changes to it, nothing big. So, so that's about all I have right now.
Okay.
Especially regarding the memorial down to courthouse. If we have anything on that, we ain't here.
Well, I did, well, like I did speak to Roy again, um. And one of his concerns about using that plaza was utilities and stuff. That was something we talked about. I talked to Tom, he sent us the site plans, Roy and I, and all of the utilities actually run, if you're looking at the courthouse, if you're looking at that plaza. Utilities run to the far right. So as long as that memorial's in the center. It wouldn't have an impact.
Right, the edge of the con, sorry, the sidewalk.
Yeah, it's right near the sidewalk, exactly. Um. But Roy wasn't sure if he liked the plaza or where the pantry was there. So they were just fine. Cause I told them, you guys said whatever they felt was best working out. So.
I, I don't know if you've mentioned to him, but you know, there's, there's gonna be upkeep on this wall, so, okay, correct?
Well.
A little bit.
I didn't, I've never done a thing in time.
Well, the reason I asked that question, if I had to letter, I got people that are willing to give, but they want a letter.
If you all want me to write the letter, I'll write the letter, but we don't have much at some cost. Like, he doesn't even know what it's gonna look like.
Yeah, well, I mean. And he's a. I, I would think they would wanna know what it's gonna look like and what our plans are before.
And, and Roy is concerned about raising too much money.
Well, that's why it's, that's gonna be a little.
Right, but you're talking about like. Two dollars a month on the electric bill and maybe cleaning and every now and then. I don't know. I don't know what kind, like, we've never done anything to those walls. I'm not saying it shouldn't have been done.
Replace flags, things like that.
Yeah.
When we, if we do flags.
Right, and that's what we don't even know. That's up to you all. If you wanna let her, I'll write a letter, but like I said, we're just trying to get it.
I think we'll see what it looks like before we do a letter. Alright. Pro, travel policy.
I haven't had a chance to actually have a bond into it. Was lucky to find. That'll be next week.
Well. Put that off for next week?
Yeah, we wanted it for February, cause all the, we didn't have that many people traveling in January, but.
All my people travel in.
February, February is really crazy.
I travel with Rachel and I leave tomorrow and Thursday and then I travel next week and.
So that'll be put off to February then?
Well, I told my people to use the B card, so that's what we're gonna do anyways, and once policy is in effect, I mean, I think that's what everyone needs to do.
We can actually even have a work session at the, uh, one of the board of unionizations. You only have to schedule a work session.
And I'm like, oh shit, it's on this February, it's on this Sunday.
Yeah. Okay, session approval. Approved letters, you state the authorization.
This is a letter we have to do every year to the state to give them permission to make changes. Um, during the month of February, and you can see a copy of it there. Maybe. Yeah, I did.
At the city.
So they have changes to make right now and they don't, cause they can't, if they do not have this letter. Just need a motion to approve the letter and authorize the president to sign.
Make a motion to approve the letter and authorize president to sign.
I second and I approve that also.
Okay, that's up toward, settle.
So we are getting, this was the tour money.
How much?
Thirty thousand.
Forty thousand?
Uh huh. This is not part of the opioid. Uh, the auditor's office is giving, uh, regulations. Um, guidelines. So once we have those.
Oh, so we're doing now, how we, when they get there?
Much, just going one or off, but we didn't give it. So this is not part of the opioid settlement. This was something different.
We're gonna carry to the Mineral County First Committee then, or?
No, no. This is not part of the opioid.
Yeah, I just didn't know where.
That's the auditor's office. Most likely it's just like the General County. But they'll be the direction guideline on that.
Okay, so. We'll move along to Mineral County Deputy Sheriff Civil Service Board. Recommendation for update terrain.
The Civil Service Board did meet and, um, of course she had also spoken to the sheriff's department. And, uh, this has been a discussion that's been in place for some time. That the upper officers, you know, are going over the next couple of years, losing those. Senior, more experienced, I don't wanna say senior officers, I'm sorry, I said that in some way. Um, they are requesting to add in an additional lieutenant position. And this is a recommendation from the Civil Service Board. Uh, the lieutenant position and two sergeant positions. Because in order for anybody to be promoted in future, they have to serve two years in a lower rank before they can be promoted to the higher rank. So without being in those positions for at least two years, when everybody else retired, you're not gonna have anybody to bump up. And that's.
So you're talking three positions. How much money are we on?
Okay, well. There is a. Dollar amount with those ranks as they are right now. Sergeants gets an additional two thousand and lieutenant gets an additional three thousand.
So you're looking at seven thousand.
For that as it is right now.
That's a big increase. What do they do with all that?
JJ over shaking his head. Buy an extra can of soda last year.
You know how long it's been since I had a three thousand dollar raise?
We, we see you, Barbie, tell whoever you said.
What'd you say?
He said you've been retired for thirty years.
Yeah. But no raises. Sure studio, get ready.
The rank structure is important. Um, it's been in the works for several years. Um. But we do find ourselves where there is a gap between. This, the officers with senior years or more years, seniority. And I think there's a six-year gap, maybe six or seven-year gap.
Between looking within the next, I mean, within the next six years, everybody. With more than ten years currently is going to be gone because we're.
And we're gonna be hurt if we don't do something.
And that's what I, I mean, we've talked about this for the last several years. I've been bringing this up when we finally got to a position where we could address it officially with civil service and get it brought up and, um. I. My thing is, is. And again, it's, I think it's kind of a common sense thing that we're all going to be leaving sooner rather than later. I mean, comparatively. And I've been here for twenty-four and a half, twenty-five years now. Chris has been here for twenty-five years. Mark's been here for twenty. Roger's been here for twenty-three, twenty-four. And you've got a lot of guys that's got a bunch of years. And then you've got a lot of guys that are, you know, six years or less, and there's not, you don't have enough people in those middle positions is the problem.
And it is a requirement for the two years. So that means two years after they get promoted now before they can even be considered.
And that's, and, and for complete clarity, my intentions is if they approve it. Is to ask for a waiver for some of these guys to be able to promote now because they don't have enough time in. You know what I mean? And so if I. Yeah, but I think civil service can waive it. I think that's a discuss.
Thing of the issue is if something, somebody has to retire, you'd be hurt.
That's, that's the thing.
Well, that's their, that's a new word. They have to have two years in a lower rank before they can bump up. But they just need approval right now to add that position.
And they have to test.
And then they would have to test. Yeah.
I'll make a motion on the previous three positions, two sergeants, I don't want to bring. Except that you're not approved at all.
Okay, now. So. And I wanted to have this more presentation for numbers for you. Instead of just. So, well, I mean, I had the numbers, but like what it would actually like amount to be. So right now a deputy first class gets five hundred dollars. A corporal gets a thousand, which the civil service board waived the right to test for corporals, so now it's just time and service. Um, they get a thousand dollars. When you do get promoted to sergeant, you get two thousand dollars. Now that's a supervisory position, so you're getting two thousand dollars for all the additional responsibilities you have. Then you get, for lieutenant, you get additional three thousand, again, for all the additional duties you have. And for captain. You only get three thousand for all the additional responsibilities and duties you have. The wage and review, uh, wage and review board, the civil service. Mineral County Deputy Sheriff's Civil Service Board. Has come up with a percentage amount. Because back when this was developed, the starting salary was only like thirty thousand. So this sounded like a decent amount. But what they're recommending. If the commission would consider it, would do a percentage increase. For these ranks. Now, they have come up with comparable percentages. So deputy first class would be around two percent. That would be a thousand dollars. Based on the base pay. That's the thing, this would be a percentage based on the entry level. So that way it will increase as the entry based salary increases. Four percent for corporal, which would be two thousand. Eight percent for sergeant because they take on a supervisory position with additional responsibilities and liabilities. That would be four thousand. Ten thousand for lieutenant, ten thousand. Ten percent for lieutenant, which comes out to five thousand. Again, additional responsibilities. And captain would be twelve thou, twelve percent, which would be six thousand.
Oh, there, anyway, listen, wait, we see what our revenue. How does that? Play in as far as. When they get their. Increase in rank, that's when the pay jumps up?
Yes. So when they.
If anybody that's already in a rank, it doesn't go retroactive and.
That's the third part of this request.
I think we're gonna wait and see what our revenue.
Well, you have three, you just made, you just approved those three positions. So we're looking at, you know.
I understand that. Because right now. We've got one big thing facing us. Nobody, nobody has an answer on it. That's insurance. And you're looking at about a hundred and thirty thousand dollars increase on the insurance. I'd like to wait to see what the revenue is.
And I'd like.
Your budget, see what revenues will be and.
As far as changing the percentage to the. Increases.
Get you, get you a shot of that, Jack.
Thank you, boss.
Yeah, yeah, I, I, I listen to her pretty good when it comes to figures, but you're looking a lot of money there. So I've got. You just wanna look at, and you might do look at what you want. So. These, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
Down this side, you get BFC, fourth sergeant, lieutenant, captain. This is what is currently in place. Uh, as my understanding, now, you were saying two thousand for sergeant, but it's what I've got is fifteen hundred for sergeant.
We get two thousand.
So this number is actually a little higher than. What it would actually be. But. When we implemented it. And I've. I didn't get an exact number, but I know about when it was because of Corpus Office being out in commission, so. I know about when it was and I know about what it's salary. So it's around thirty thousand. In oh six or oh seven, when we implemented this system. So at that point. What they implemented is this percentage. So it's one point seven three, three point three, five, and, and. Based on these numbers. Does that make sense? You know, this is what we initially did. This is what the civil service board. This position's at the bottom wrong. Cause you got three positions, seventy-five. Is that a piece? No. That's total. That's total. Okay, so she's saying. So she's saying that this is two thousand and not fifteen, so that would actually decrease this. By what, fifteen hundred dollars, because I actually did it fifteen, based on what you're currently paying, you know what I'm saying? So then, out here, this is the totals, if you approve the increase. So it would be sixteen, right? This is actually, above what we've got now. Is what you're looking at.
Is it multiple pages, JJ, or is that other stuff?
Yes, I might have, no, that's all the ones I've wrote. But that's what I was. I guess what I'm getting at is basically what has happened, and I think you guys understand what's happening. This was the percentages, but and the other thing is, is this didn't come from me or anybody else, this was the civil service commission. And they're basically like you guys, they can take our recommendation, but then they do whatever. These are the numbers they come up with during the running. This was what the original, the original numbers are different. You know, based on the dollar, but it's just the difference in fact, it's the difference in standing sound. Yeah, well, back then it was about the same as what we're asking for now. One way or another, something fell off, right? Well. Well, because it just took three, three, two, this.
But then the third part of that is that. The percentages and the current officers. Also for the difference, because otherwise the new officers are gonna be making more than that as they go.
I understand that too.
Well, and that's.
I was expecting that.
Just, just for the record.
Yeah, you got ahead of us.
That's all, all those figures are on there too. But speaking for me and the guys that that's going to affect, I've talked to all of them, that's why we broke it up into three positions. The other thing is, is you're asking, and again, I'm not, but. I know what I do versus the pay of what I get. Over my regular people, it's, it's, it's not much. And so. I've talked to Chris, talked to Roger, and to us, the important thing is making it right for the other guys. Now, with that being said, I would certainly think you ought to consider. Pro rating that because it's a significant amount of money. And what's gonna happen is eventually, as soon as we promote. If, if we promoted a sergeant currently and under this new schedule, he's gonna automatically make more than Chris does. I'm the only one that won't, they'll, they'll be making more than me once the raise goes through, if you don't do it factated. But again, I'm not making that argument, it's on there for you to consider. But to me, the important thing as far as for the longevity and for the guys that you've got working for you now. Is those percentage increases are gonna make a difference to them right now. And again, the other stuff, it's, it's a substantial amount of money if you start looking at factating it. I think you need to consider it and we can talk about it, but that's kind of where we're at, that's why we're doing three different things. Because the position was one thing, but then actually doing the increase. And the increases end up, all of us across the board get a little bit, I mean, it does, it, it gives us all a little bit of friction.
I would like to get our budget. Before we make a decision.
I know, that's, I honestly, that's, that's why I brought it to you tonight.
Between what?
The increase is happening.
It is sixteen.
That's a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. We might have to look at something. That's a lot.
But you know that you can sit in the.
You can catch up.
Yeah.
It could catch up. Okay. We'll move on to. Five thirty. You're at five thirty appointment, can we sit here or come up here?
I'm okay right here.
You're, you're fine right here, sir, whatever. You like that peach?
Oh, it's wonderful.
No, listen, I don't want you to drink enough of that weed, I want you to be able to walk out.
No, it's just teasing, it's not, uh, not cooked, right?
No, it's, it's good stuff.
I wouldn't want over everyone, I thought it was.
Okay, yeah.
And, uh, I would like to suggest that we do a short executive session. Through what's any code six nine A dash four B nine. Um, basically, uh, information, uh, um, that can affect competitive practices in business. Um, and then come back out and then say anything we want to say fundamentally.
You mean with Jack?
Yeah, with Jack, yeah.
It's up to you, doesn't it?
Yes.
If that's what you want with him. Jerry, you come to. It's fine, I don't have nothing to hide.
So let's go back here. The little conference room is full of keys and things, so you'll just have to either stay at Cody's office.
They talk about what they, it's like always time to think about. But as for, uh, those testing for sergeant and lieutenant.
Start testing.
So who's that one who tested lieutenant? So you got Donnie, Roger, Chris? Or Mark?
And Mark.
Roger, Mark, and Don. For sergeant, you have Nick and you have conscious.
Danielle, he's broke.
See, that's the thing, neither one of them were technically eligible when you like.
August and September, yeah.
Cause that's why we put him up there.
And see, he doesn't count as one of these positions. Cause that's Anderson's position, that's position's already approved.
I think he took that with the understanding, if you pass the pass it, if not, you'd just be doing that as a quote. But he has to pass the pass.
Yeah, that's actually, yeah. But.
And if the civil service commission want to approve that waiver, it's only seven months, I mean, six, seven month. To wait to August or September, and we're not that far out. For them to do that, that's obviously, I think conscious is actually September, right? It also, I don't know, that's under code.
Because we didn't do that initially. The tier set to entail the positions available.
We were allowed to do the waiver the first time, the first time. But once you're in, then you have to, that's two year, two year. Let's say what.
I mean, that's all they can at least test, right? So we.
And they test and wait, so they can, we can test that.
Do that, like at least probably even like July test them. And then when it's kind of just like.
On Friday? Cause really, it's gonna take one, if you want us to get a test, we want it back.
No.
Oh, it's faster now?
Oh, you're taking on Saturday, Monday, every day.
Oh, so it's not like it was.
Actually, no, for these, for these, you can just four right away. At the end of the test, you wait a second.
Cause we did it on paper.
Yeah, they, they wait and they wait one minute and then they click a button and the score comes up. So they know they passed right then and there.
Yeah, well, there's somewhere to. Well, that's the tennis test is a bear. Yeah, I'm not joking.
I thought about taking it.
That's a bear. I was scared that I failed.
So Peyton's corporal position, and that's pick a fight now. Cause he should, he should have.
And actually Bradley test in February.
So that his time.
How's things going with your first few weeks?
And then Bradley will be next month, right?
Yeah, September sixteen, or February sixteen.
And worst time. And she.
I'm just sitting here. I'm not doing it. Cause they're just putting more people in the right into these positions. And it's, it's.
The longer, yeah, the longer.
And you're right, this.
You're grossing me, aggravating.
Plus just the whole thing of like.
Whatever works out.
You see, see what I'm saying?
Is that a precaution?
No. So this year, if the guys, BFC now, he comes in, of course, under the new percentages. This is what he.
Yeah, so if you make fourteen thousand dollars more than. So yeah, that's.
Yeah, and that's, so like, you can do that, so if the guy's currently corporal, this is what he would make.
Definitely, and I'll be honest with you, I didn't wanna bombard you in the first two days.
This is what a guy that is.
So like they approve it, but not pro day, pre day, whoever next is going to instantly make a roll. And that's gonna be.
Yeah. Now, like I said, I'm the only one that it's not one matter, but. If this guy to sergeant to lieutenant, he's gonna be making six thousand dollars.
Right.
So not, you at least will get a lieutenant's, you know what I mean, it's only five thousand dollars for you. But between him, between sergeant and me, it's gonna be six thousand dollars.
And I know they think for, I think they're making sixty, seventy, seventy thousand your base now a year.
The building that belonged in.
I do, I think so.
Jackson can say, I, I stopped and counting it two hundred and seven because somebody came and asked you. They need to be down the other one, but they count both, so three, four, seven, they've been devolved. A lot of the captains were built along too. Oh, okay. Five team more.
So rookie's husband, uh, works at for Chody. He was in an accident at his place. One day he wakes up and apparently he thinks, well, like, slightly go out of battery. And I'm using that weapon. And his leg was wooden, he said it didn't hurt anyway. So she had to try to go off to work and push it back, like literally his body just stuck. So and I'm thinking here is like, God, that doesn't sound fun at all.
Well, it's what I'm getting at.
I would have sold this like Jim Smith, someone youthful.
The thing in my office wasn't gonna be the worst, I am the regular keeper. Our record to back in eighteen hundred.
I would convince them that if their brain were rust out of it.
I'm not left much in the past two weeks, so. Moving is a pain anyway.
This is a true story. This is an absolute true story, this is.
When they think about, we knew our big office, we were little one. Of course, they said, why don't you just scan and throw the old stuff away? Document that actually from eighteen ninety-two and seeing a scanned copy of it. There is no comparison. Uh, this is, they had recorded. Um, so it's dependent on how you have your documents, you must have it in a readable format, so that's why we have the micro, uh, microfilm backup. Because digital backup is nice, but digital programs change. And if you don't have. Equipment or the programs to read your data, your data's not good. So by the microfilm, you at least have that. You know, as a backup or permit. So we don't have everything standard, so that's a process that. We've been back seeing, um, in two thousand nineteen, we started on scanning. And we did our, the, the items that were indexed back to eighty-seven. Then we started back indexing and scanning the deed, so we got back. But it's very complicated, you're going to page a book page, you're indexing it and you're scanning that deed. But then the next D document, you're indexing it, scanning it, so it's very complicated. We just wanted to make sure you're spelling things correctly, you know, spell it right.
Like literally, sort of missing the ball, the brain had it like too much.
I think I've had a migraine for three months. I guess you guys probably.
Maybe sort of some minor stuff, but yeah, we're.
Like I said, there's some, there was one like up in the shed, I was asking, Chris, something, we're in tax office. I was stood up for them, just add a late two weeks. You did find our table.
I always stole one of the, that's what it was, I always stole, but then I seen a piece of tape. I always stole with tape.
I thought it was the price for all three, we were all excited, we were like, oh, look at this deal. Well, it turned out to be the price for each one, but they're gonna cover it on the home yet, cause they're sturdy, first of all, but then you've been folding up inside.
I was the number one for the interviewer, and I'll tell you what's in there. Now, technically, I stole from the county, the county stole from the county, but our interviewer threw that away. Concrete wall, center block walls, concrete floor, and you couldn't interview, and they're supposed to play the court.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, no, I didn't know, I'm sorry. Where's Kevin's cabinet? That was a short walk.
Bill, we want this beer. He thought the meeting was over. He thought the meeting was over.
Yeah. Yep.
Definitely. And I tried to get out, but they pulled back in.
Hey, you never do it.
Probably cut you the check back? No. See, that's. I don't know why you're. Stupid.
By the way, that's, that's scary, that's just.
If he keeps showing up, the reason he shows up is if we need to borrow any money. He has to go to.
Yeah.
Executive session. Yeah, what we, we talking a bit about. Trying to keep businesses here in Mineral County, supporting businesses in Mineral County, and that's all we've done, so. Uh, yes. So I'll make a motion that, um, Luke will get with Kevin Lark. And to write a letter, uh, to Martha Crumman. Uh, trying to get a meeting or something set up.
Yeah.
For local businesses to be able to do business with Martha Crumman.
I second that. I approve that also. Luke, before I take care of that, Kevin and him. All right.
Okay. So, sheriffs are up to discussion on overtime.
Well, if you came with you.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm, I had that marched up. We're court security on, my, my, my fault.
Okay, uh, yeah, we discussed it in the work session, uh, possibly hiring too. And then the following day. Um. I learned that one of my law firms is gonna have to be off for plus months due to surgery. So in lieu of having two bailiffs, I would like to have the one bailiff and hire a part-time law firm to help Karen.
For who knows how long?
Well, I mean, it, not just for the time when he's off, but also, I mean, they, they are going to retire within the next year and a half. So it'd be nice to have somebody that, uh, will be there to help and at least know the job, and will be able to maintain that, that office and keep it open for about a week. And with the bailiff, uh, hiring the bailiff along with possible increase in salary. Um, the numbers I've worked up, if we, right now, a starting bailiff is gonna be at thirty thousand, seven hundred and eighty dollars, which is fourteen, fourteen dollars and eighty cents an hour. Now, if we add a twelve percent increase to that, that's going to raise them up to sixteen fifty-seven an hour, which is we're into thirty-four thousand, four hundred and seventy-three.
How, how much was the increase? I didn't.
At twelve percent, based off of the starting salary.
That'll take them up to sixteen.
Yeah, that'll take them up to sixteen, roughly sixteen fifty-seven an hour.
Thirty-four thousand what?
Uh, thirty-four thousand, four hundred and seventy-three. And then by adding that twelve percent to the hour, the increase to the three that we currently have, that would move Adam, who's been there eighteen years, I believe. Um, his current pay is eighteen thirty an hour, we put him up to twenty fifty. And then Ed and Wade are relatively close, there's only a year's difference, but Ed is at sixteen twenty-three, and would put him to eighteen eighteen. And Wade is sixteen oh eight to eighteen oh two.
Why thirty-four, four, seventy-three?
Say again?
Why thirty-four thousand, four hundred and seventy-three dollars rather than thirty-four thousand, five hundred?
That's just what.
That's what.
I'm trying to give an exact.
That's just based on twelve percent.
Oh, a percentage increase.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's all right.
And. In total, that's gonna be roughly forty-seven thousand dollars a year, but that's also by adding in the salary of the new bailiff. So rather than just having three bailiffs, you got four. And the salary was one of the last budget of a hundred and five thousand, three hundred would be roughly one fifty-two, four hundred. With the one bailiff.
How do you feel about approving the, the bailiff? But holding off when the raises?
What about a ten percent? Cause I worked up numbers for that too, just in case.
By waiting till we get our budget straightened up and, or not straightened out, but.
I'm fine with that, sir.
If we can, if we can wait, we get our budget, let's go through our budget stuff, so.
But in the, approving the hiring of the, of the one bailiff.
I'm okay with the hiring of the bailiff and the part-time clerk.
Yes, sir.
Um, I just, any raises right now, I'd like to hold off.
Fine with that.
Um. My fact, I'll make a motion, we're going hard, not the security officers.
I didn't really make a motion.
Oh, okay.
Yes, I was asking. Said they need to do that.
Well, now, mind you, this, this guy with the three part-times that we have with Doug and, uh. Uh, Nathan Rice. Yeah.
Doug's not even.
I was gonna say Doug's not really a part-time court security officer, he just helps.
He just helps, right.
Um, after all this, I spoke to him and Nathan, uh, Jeff Conley, as I've already spoke to him before, he's aware that, uh, whenever Hotchkiss, uh. informs him whatever week, days that he needs to be as available, he's going to be there. Uh, he's gonna be used as a bailiff, uh, but the other two gave me their word that all we need to do is call them and they will fill in when, whenever we need them. So that, that helped out a lot, but just adding one bailiff, that.
So you made a motion, yeah, we'll be. Say, uh, and that.
Well, I didn't do the part-time law, I got the zip under, I did put a bailiff, you second, I agree with that also. We, we made a motion that we're gonna write a letter, see if we can, with Kevin, uh. Luke's gonna get with Kevin, write a letter, see if we can set a meeting up with him.
Thank you.
Okay, guys?
Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome.
Appreciate your time.
No, it's not a problem.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Thank you, buddy.
Anything we can do to help?
I appreciate it.
Thanks for everything you do with the.
Oh, yes.
And the gym basement and stuff.
Yes, thanks, we appreciate it. Thank you.
Did you like that stuff?
It was wonderful.
And you make sure you walk straight.
No, you wouldn't. I'm driving me away.
Okay, I'll take it. Thanks, Jerry.
And on the law clerk at fifteen an hour, at sixteen of two twenty hours per week, you're looking in between eleven-five and fourteen-four a year.
Okay.
Without benefits.
That depends.
They get benefits?
No.
Karen, all, all, that person.
If they're twenty hours, they can, they get benefits according to the employee handbook.
Right. Yeah.
Well, you're talking about insurance, or you're talking about sick vacation. They get sick vacation accrued at, uh, prorated, but.
Right, right, it's half of what a full time.
And at twenty hours, you have to pay your parents.
Well, no, twenty hours a week we do.
If it's a twenty hour, forty a year.
It depends, I guess, on the contractor.
Or into the handbook.
Okay.
Now, if she agrees to sixteen hours a week.
It's good to, it's good to hold the retirement, because if they go over the ten forty at the end of the year, then you have to pay the whole thing back anyway.
So as long as whoever the employee is that's under twenty hours, that doesn't have to be paid.
Well, how long did you need before, Joe?
Well, it's not a twenty hours a week, it's a thousand forty hours a year. So she can work, well, she or he can work forty hours a week for half the year, and it's okay.
How, how, uh? Uh, how? How long do you think you're gonna need your four per, per day, per week?
Some care and average out what, twenty hours per week?
Yeah, they can do a little bit more because they're under, they're not drawing retirement because they can't draw retirement, they're given the same.
So at twenty hours, they should be good.
So they're usually.
How do you do that? What do you do?
Time sheets are usually around fifty-six.
Their current retirement has a cap on how much money they can make a year and still grow, because it's all through PIA, so they, they do like. But it's right around twenty is usually what it works out to.
It's actually. Actually, okay, where's your guess? Uh, make a motion, we're starting the, uh, part-time law clerk. Um, we have to, because the judges are asking for this, right?
Yeah.
This is. No, this is the role. This is the secretary.
The secretary.
Okay. I second it, and I approve that also. We're good to get in there. All right, what about your discussion on overtime?
Uh, yeah, the discussion on the overtime, we would like to follow up with it, with the later, um. We, we weren't able to get the information.
Okay, that's not a problem.
We need to get, uh. Uh. Get some information so we can get those reports made up for you guys, have it on hand to show.
Okay. All right, discussion weapons transition there. She's in my line. We'll be going next week. Yeah. So this is just something you guys can follow with, I make. So what we've been talking about, we've discussed this in the past, uh. But what we wanna do is right now, and I'm just going to, you can read over that, and I'm just gonna tell you what we have. Right now, we have currently. Twenty-eight guns in our inventory, I'm talking handguns, only duty handguns. And they are different generations of the Glock forty-five caliber, Glock twenty-one. The problem with that, myself and Sergeant Seville are armors. And we recently, well, he recently done some inspections, and we had a couple fail inspections for springs, war. The problem is, is we have, all of these generations require different internals, so we came up with a parts list, but it's a nightmare. So we've been discussing going to a nine-millimeter Glock and, and dropping from the forty-five. The reason for that is state police is currently carrying a Glock seventeen-nine-millimeter, Kaiser City Police, DNR, so we have ammunition compatibility. So before we get into switching the guns, if you look on page two. Uh, I just did this so y'all could look at it. You recently approved an ammunition purchase. Now, I have called them and said, fold the forty-five. Uh, there was forty-five on there, but if we do this. Then I'm going to switch that over to the nine-millimeter, but just to give you guys just the ammunition alone of how much money we'll save. At the bottom there, I can order six thousand additional handgun rounds, and I'm coming in sixty-five hundred budget of what y'all previously approved for ammunition purchase. So the prices are considerably lower for ammunition. Now, for the guns. I called this morning, and these are actual per penny quite price quotes. Uh, so first, the biggest expense here is holsters. The guns actually is the, the smaller expense, if you look at the whole scheme of things. So to get everyone, uh, including court security and our pro officers in the school, we're going to need twenty-seven holsters now. I put twenty-eight there, so we'd have one spare. Uh, we recently, back before Christmas, we had, I don't know how he did it, but it was actually Deputy Bucklue broke his holster, he cried, I don't know how he did it, but it's proven to have a spare holster. Uh, nonetheless, I got two price quotes, one was from Galls, one was from M E S. Now, I'm concerned with the Galls quote, because that was on the phone, and I'm not quite so sure that was the correct holster, but I do know M E S was one hundred percent what I specked out from Safari Land. So I think the six thousand, three hundred and twenty-eight, twenty-eight, twenty-eight cents is the more accurate quote for upgrading holsters. Now, having said that. So we have, it's a six thousand dollar expense to upgrade holsters, the handguns for twenty-nine, that gives us two spare. And, uh, if you're asking yourself, new to this, why do you need spare handguns? Well, we've had two shootings at the sheriff's office in the past several years. And those guns are taken, and they're, they go to the lab for a, a time, so. Those guns are, and if we have two officers at the same time, then we don't have enough guns, so now we, we, we're sharing guns. But nonetheless, we'd like to have two spare handguns in our armory. The total price of those would be thirteen thousand, five hundred, thirteen fifty. Now, so that total, you're looking at over twenty, about almost twenty thousand dollars, but having said that. I did an approximate trade-in value of our current Glocks in inventory, you can see there the current Glock twenty-one inventory, and I actually kinda lowballed that. Uh, I think we could maybe do a little more, but I think that's more accurate, so we can trade the Gen fives for probably four fifty, the Gen fours for four hundred, the Gen threes for three fifty. And approximate trade-in price is around a little over ten thousand dollars is what we'll get back. So the actual cost of replacing, getting new guns would be about twenty-seven hundred dollars. Now, the pros to that is one parts list, one spare parts list across the board for everyone, and everyone, and some of our Gen three guns are dated, some of these guns date back twenty years. Uh, so we have some old guns, the Gen threes are really old in inventory, some of our Gen fours, they date back maybe ten, ten years. But nonetheless, we're getting some war guns, particularly the Gen threes. Uh. So. The total upgrade with the trade-in is approximately nine thousand dollars, okay? Now, I've already talked to the sheriff, and he allowed me, and he's approved this. February thirteenth, Bob Lilly is coming up from the Treasury Department to pick up fifty-one guns that has been in our inventory and not, not owned by us, but seized guns. Uh, suicide guns, uh, found property, and by law, the Treasury Department has to sell those for us. So we turned our report in last fall, me and, uh, uh. Deputy Brathwaite, and he's coming up February thirteenth to pick them up, then they auction them. I believe the auction is sometime this summer. We get ninety percent of those proceeds, according to Bob Lilly, we get approximately, they average approximately two hundred dollars a gun. That means some may bring eight hundred, some may bring fifty, depending on the shape they're in. But we're anticipating getting approximately ten thousand dollars back from the Treasury Department sometime probably September, October. So what we're proposing to you, if you allow us to do this now. When that check comes in from the Treasury Department, uh, it will just return it to the general fund. So we're basically asking for an advance. If that makes sense. That's what we got.
Is, is some of them Gen threes, you say, is getting some years on?
The Gen threes, now, we, what we've done with the Gen threes is we, as we hire road deputies. We put those, like, they're in the hands of our court security, the pro officers, and some of our, like, the new academy's got an old Gen three. Uh, and then when we typically, when we get new guns, we, we issue them by seniority. Yeah, some of the Gen threes are getting some age development.
What's your guys' thoughts?
And I don't know if you're familiar with blocks, but now we're up to genera, that means generation, where they're on the generation five, and the generation five's been out for. Three or four years, and we have some generation three stuff, and they change some internal parts, like recoil springs, and they're not compatible with each other. And the recoil springs is what's failing our, uh, function tests, which means they're wearing. So.
And that's not safe.
Well, and, and we've replaced some stuff, and the cost isn't awful. Like, we can get a new recoil spring for five dollars. The problem is if we stock spare parts, we were gonna order a spare part, we haven't done it yet, but we came up with a list. Well, it's a nightmare, because we got three different types of springs, a recoil spring, three types of this, so we could streamline that for our spare parts list, it would make things logistically easier for us. That's, that's not really a money saver, because the, the price per piece isn't that much, but it's just organizing and keeping all of these different parts.
But over a period of time, when the cost of that.
The cost of ammunition over a period of time, and that's why I put that one there, is tremendous.
Yeah, it'll, it'll.
And I, and I broke down, and these, by the way, these prices, I didn't form out of the internet or off the internet, these are exact prices quoted from. Whitman Public Safety, which is where we buy our ammunition, I've been Chalkdale, Pennsylvania, so that's the actual what we pay for the ammunition. At this, this month, and that's fluid, obviously, ammunition prices change constantly, but that's what we're paying right now.
So that's pretty much what everybody uses, forty-fives and nine?
And right now, everyone except us is using the nine, the state police, they went to the.
As far as the department goes.
So what we do, we issue two handguns, we issue a duty handgun and an off-duty handgun, so right now, we're buying nine and forty-five. For our off-duty guns, we're issuing a Glock forty-three, which is a small nine-millimeter, and for duty use, we're using a Glock twenty-one, which is a forty-five. This would allow us to also legitimately only stock nine-millimeter handgun ammo. Right now, I'm stocking three calibers, two twenty-three, twelve gauge, nine-millimeter, forty-five, this would allow me to keep on our armory. Two twenty-three, twelve gauge, and nine-millimeter, legitimately, it gets a little easier on me and, and Deputy, and Corporal Wilson, who, who tracks that stuff, so. And it's cheaper, I, so, and, and, and in full disclosure, y'all approved a purchase of ammunition, I'll be at the last meeting. We intend on spending all of that that you approved, minus sixty-five dollars, but it's going to allow me to put an additional six thousand rounds in our armory for the same cost.
I had to.
Branders. Especially forgetting the money back from the state. And now, let me make it clear, the money from the state, we have fifty-one guns going to sell at auction. It could go crappy, and we get a check for two thousand dollars, I don't anticipate that. Bob Lilly said they average two hundred, but there's no guarantee. But if you do the math, fifty-one, it's actually. But if you do the math, fifty one, it's actually ten thousand two hundred, but I just estimated. I says expect we're going to get around ten thousand. Again, it could be fifteen, it could be five. I don't know.
How fast do you go through the inventory of ammo?
So I like a training, we have uh, twenty, right now, we have twenty six guys that carry guns. So if we do a training day where everyone fires five hundred rounds, which isn't much, we just burn up, what, eight thousand rounds of ammunition? So it it doesn't last long, but that. Uh, that's the problem with the forty five, it costs so much more to train. So we typically, with qualifications in training, will burn ten to twelve thousand rounds a year. And that's not a lot of shooting. I mean, that's minimal training, but you just have so many people doing it.
How many you got training?
Twenty six. That includes pro. Now, that's once we're full staff.
Yeah.
That's for right now, we're not full staff, but that's full staff.
Yeah.
But twenty six guys with bay lips, pro officers, and sworn officers.
I'm good. What's your thoughts, Johnny?
I agree. I think it's. Yeah.
And I tried to make these numbers are as close, and now the holster thing. Uh, so Galls offered us possibly a twenty percent discount, I put it on there, which would drop back to around forty five hundred. However, I'm not so sure that's the correct model, because it was a little confusing on the phone. Now, M E S, we actually sent the SKU number, because I said I spec these holsters out on with Safari Land Direct, now they won't sell direct. Uh. But I sent M E S the exact model numbers, SKU numbers, part numbers, and that is the exact thing that I I specked out. So I I will probably go with M E S, because I'm afraid if we try to save fifteen hundred dollars, we're going to get their own holster and rent a bunch of stuff back, is what I'm afraid of.
I think we should.
That's that's. Purchase.
I second, and I approve that also.
Okay. Now, as far as all of your weapons, do you have all your weapons on hand?
All the weapons are, we have, I have an inventory of all of them, so they're issued out, and then we have a few in our armory. So I'll let Joel discuss. We're going to have to, the, so Glock is a weird. So we used to buy all of our weapons through Whitman Public Safety in Chalk Hill. Uh, they're a law enforcement distributor. However, this isn't a law, but Glock's policy, their their uh, U S headquarters is down is in is down in Georgia, Smyrna, Georgia. They cordon off the U S in regions. For some reason, we are not in Chalk Hills region, which is an hour away, because I drive to get around here, it takes about an hour to get there. You know where it's, it's right where you get the Union Town, right off forty.
Yeah.
Uh, Pittsburgh isn't our region. So the guns have to come from Pittsburgh, which makes zero sense, but that's Glock's rules. We can, they can no longer, if they sell us a Glock, an agency, they'll lose their their uh, Glock dealer status. So we won't be able to trade our guns direct to Pittsburgh. So what we're going to have to do, and he's already got in contact with a couple of F F L dealers, we're going to have to trade them. To a local F F L dealer, and he's, and I I don't know, we're going to have to check the legality, so we have, I don't know, we have to do bids for that? I don't know how that.
The commission surplus is the, it's a thousand dollars. So this doesn't, the state treasurer say all firearms have to go through them?
Well, we was discussing that. I was under the assumption that was only found property or evidence guns. I don't know.
Okay.
The information I got is the property is owned by the county commission. And at a thousand dollars unless they have the discretion as to how to sell that, but it would have to go to a F F L. And not to individuals.
Right, right. So he looked at a couple of lost guns, I think Rob Fow and then uh, Knobby Farms. And have them quote, like, if we bring in twenty, we have twenty eight guns.
At our prices and not at their.
And then what would you give us for these twenty eight guns? And and were those those uh. Those prices I put for an approximate trade, I mean, I think that's reasonable. I think we'll get that maybe a little more, but I think we'll get that.
Paramarket maybe even a little under.
I right, I think you can't buy one of these guns for what I, you you can't get on Gun Broke for a buy a Gen three Glock twenty one for three hundred fifty dollars, it's not happening. But I I kind of lowballed the trade, because I don't want to come in here and blow smoke up your little bucks, and then be like, well, you you said you was going to get ten thousand four hundred on these guns, and you got eight. So I think I think we can get at least ten out of that one.
Okay.
But time will tell.
I guess what I was really getting to was, have you received all of the previous sheriffs? Service weapons and equipment, and any county issued equipment that he has had?
Yeah. I have no way of keeping track of that, uh, all the equipment. The only thing that I, which I asked Lieutenant Letterman was that we do keep track of, which is the firearms.
Yeah, I I love firearms, that's all, so.
Okay. Has he returned all the firearms?
All but his uh, the duty weapon. Yeah, I got his rifle and his off duty weapon. He did not have a shotgun.
Okay, what is the duty weapon?
It was a, he had a Glock nineteen.
Gen five.
Gen five, yes.
So he has a. So I think, don't, aren't we entitled to get that back?
I I'm not, I would rather sit out of that discussion. I don't feel, I'm just being honest, I don't. I that's that's about my pay grade, I'm not discussing that.
I understand though, the only way to. And this, this is, this is from the West Virginia Service Association. Uh, when I approached them about uh. This with the new purchase of the handguns. The only way is to hire. Two ways, either you allow a retired member, which it would be by having twenty years of service, or medically retired. Mentally, but medical retirement, and the other way, which we just described, that's the only two ways.
Say with twenty years of service and with.
Have to have twenty years of service.
Physically disabled.
Physically disabled. So technically by code, no. But.
Because I don't want to get beat in hot water again over. The sheriff leaving and getting service weapon.
I will just, if I can say one thing on the record, and I don't, I, and listen, this is about my discussion to be had. And I don't want to offend anybody, but I will say this. Every sheriff I've ever served under has taken their duty weapon when they left our house.
I understand that, yes, and I perfectly understand past practice, but when it comes down to quarter all and ethics expression and everything else. Uh, they don't look at that, they don't care about that. All they look at is that code. And if that code doesn't entitle him to it, I think we need to get it back from him.
He doesn't have a problem with that, true.
What's that?
I'm sure he does not have a problem with that.
Well. That's that's my concern, and and I wanted to make sure we. Cover all of our bases there.
That's what you guys were probably going, it's nice to see that.
I think said that when he he brought the code to my attention, and it does say what it says, and I know Gary White served day. I presented his at a Christmas party, but when he right before he retired, I personally, and and uh. I don't know Craig Frilly took his, I knew Jeremy Pellet's with his duty weapon, and that wasn't even the subject of anything. The duty weapon's never been a subject of any conversation, but the code does say what it says, I wasn't aware of that. And my. I was looking at some too much when the sheriff left office, he was retired. I've I've always understood that in some way, but.
But I I have not found that anywhere.
Well, and again, I see the code, and the code does say what it says, but I'm not, I I, that's all I'll say. That's all I want to say about that.
Okay.
Don't turn it in this week.
How do we want to do that? We want to just call him, or we want to?
We'll turn it to Chris.
Turn it into Joel.
Don't turn it to Chris, Chris does all of them. He had all his other, then even before, right after Christmas, he had.
And I will, and I'll put one more thing on the record, uh, and. We had found a box, and I don't think you don't even know this, a Burris scope box, a site box, a red dot site. And it now dawned on me where that came from. And that, uh, Sheriff Ella Fritz paid for that out of with his own money, and I remember him now when he turned the gun in, because I found that, I found that on the gun.
That.
That he said, just keep it on the gun. So if he wants that off the bag, that is his, and it's mounted, it's in our armory, I was going to write.
I will.
Okay, he found an empty Burris red dot box for a red dot site, and I'm like, I have no idea where it is. And then I was, I was in the, I was in our armory about two weeks ago, and I seen the A R there with the red dot, I'm like, ah, it didn't dawn on me, I remember him. Uh, when he turned that in, he said that was his, but just keep it on, because he had no use for it. So, but it's probably a three, four hundred dollar site.
The people want you to choose.
Oh, yeah.
That's unfair.
I have a box tomorrow. I just want to put that on the record. Okay, thank you.
All right, next, do you have anything else? You've cost us enough money, you sure you don't have something?
If this works out well, you are one of the, if 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 everything works out according to my calculations. The county commission could potentially make about nine hundred and fifty dollars off of this sale.
You do realize that the money would have came to general fund anyways, it doesn't go to the sheriff's office, it all comes to the commission.
Well, well.
It sounds really good practice. The amount of money goes to the general fund, and if he goes on a commission.
Well, the one that makes the report to the Treasury Department, and I have per code, I have two options, one is to sell them, or the other one, I can take them down and grind them all up. So, well, I'm going to throw that out there. Right, and the code says I can do either.
Just to confirm that, I have destroyed hundreds of firearms that were worth thousands.
And the state police will not sell them to the Treasury Department.
You you break.
I'm bringing.
Yeah, you shouldn't.
No, they.
You shouldn't do that, don't destroy it.
They have a, state police, you, we.
Yeah, I know.
You don't have a choice.
No.
And if she, we can, legally, we can sell according to West Virginia State Code seventeen three. If it's bulk of county money, we can sell.
Well, these are all, and these are all uh, evidence guns, and we do actually have a couple of found property.
Once they, once they determine a surplus.
We can't sell.
No, those are. These are confiscated, and a couple's found property, like example, one of them that we're selling, it's a Glock. That in the last year plowing snow, they plowed a Glock up out of the road and was in the side ditch. No, they were cleaning the side ditches.
But if we.
If we we want to trace on it, it's not, it's not in N C I C, who knows, either someone tossed it, or they had it on the hood of their car, but that one is one for sale.
Oh, man. Where is the Treasury's gun auction at? Because I bet that.
It's in Charleston, and Bob Lilly comes to get the guns. We do nothing other than submit the report, and he's coming next week. Uh, he just sent us the tags to put on them, you have to have them unboxed. Uh, they clean them if they're messy. And I, the way he described it is they have one massive statewide auction somewhere in or around Charleston. And they label all the guns, one through, who knows how many, there's probably thousand or better. And then they start auctioning, gun number one.
And you were worried that I've never been to that auction.
There's, you have to be. You have to be. F F L to go to that auction.
It's not for individuals, okay?
Well, there's some high end.
That's it, we'll move along. Uh, part time facility supervisor, you don't need anything else.
I don't believe that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, part time. Facility supervisor.
So, um, during the last meeting, we went to executive session, discussed some issues, um.
Jim, you all right?
Let's sleep.
I'm glad you're waiting. During the last meeting, um, we went to executive session, discussed several personnel issues, um. One of the issues related to facilities, um, and frankly, my inability to keep up with all of the demands, um. You know, looking at a claw toilet and doing a grant application, and um. You know, uh, everything else I do is, it's entirely too much, and I can't manage the day to day maintenance, um. I had mentioned possibility of promoting Doug to facility supervisor, keeping him in home confinement, but he already helps maintenance some, um. Commissioner Letterman went and spoke to him after the meeting, um. And he is interested um, in doing it. And um, I think he'd be good, Doug has been leading the move. And I will give them all of the credit, because the move would not have went near as well as it has gone if it weren't for him. He has kept everybody working, and they have emptied, they have made way more progress than I thought they would. Um, that they got the tax office, the assessors office done in their time, and. In Lawrence Office is what it is, they're working on it, but it's, that's a lot.
Everything is heavy.
Yeah.
Doug was very organized with us. He told us what he wanted done, and we did what he asked, and that's exactly, and he came in and he just took it off.
Doug did?
Yes, yeah, Doug, that's a good job, and he, and honestly, he's been here fourteen years, and in that fourteen years, he's always helped maintenance, so he knows the buildings.
Well, he cares about the building, and he cares about the history.
Yes.
And it shows, and.
Um, so I know that when he talked to you, he said fourteen hundred dollars would be, I'm pointing at Roger Roger, but. He said that would be fine. He um, quickly realized that that's, um, there's way more work than work. Um.
So he's going back on his word?
Well, he's not going back, he said the fourteen would be fine, but he'd like for you to rediscover it at budget time. Um, but I think for what we're asking of him and considering he bay lips, and he started to be home confinement officer, I think a dollar an hour, which is two thousand eight dollars is. A decent start, he said, just please think about it in a budget.
Now, correct me if I'm wrong, but the work orders will be given to him.
Yes, he will be assigned and managing work order.
And he'll follow up, make sure they're done.
Yes, which is what we need.
Is what you need.
And when we need a contractor in here, I need someone other than me to always be the person following up on things. Because like, I don't even know something didn't get done sometimes, because I can't be everywhere all the time, and he would do a bit about keeping up with that.
He saved thousands of dollars, but if he wasn't doing this, you would have had to hire members.
I I think it's a good idea. And so the fourteen, that's the increase in pay for now.
I I really think a dollar on the hour would be fair, and then we can talk about it in budget time and see how things go. And that would give him a little more than he asked for, and um, give him a dollar more an hour, and then at budget time, we can see how things have gone.
Gentlemen, what's your thoughts?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm I'm in favor of. I think, I mean, I think it'd be good, especially if we're going to have this, things following through.
Yeah.
Following up on.
Things just not being followed.
Looking through the crack cracks.
Yes, I hear a motion.
I make a motion, we uh. Give Doug the title of part time facility supervisor. And a raise of, is it two thousand eighty or?
Two thousand eighty is a dollar an hour.
Two thousand eighty, a year to do that. I hear a second, I second, and I approve that also.
Texting, so I'll fix, I won't be here tomorrow. And I did preemptively meet with maintenance yesterday, they're aware, I'm going to be sending out a memo to elected officials tomorrow.
I think, I think that'll make things go better.
Oh, I think so, too, he's um.
You're going to help pay his medical bills for his bad back.
Yeah. Uh, told me, okay.
No, I'm saying moving all the stuff.
Oh, oh, from the, okay, I I didn't know. Okay, Parks and Rec program manager salary adjustment, let me make a comment on that.
More salary.
More salary, now, let me make this, what I did with that paper. I had a paper on that that was turned in yesterday at the Parks and Rec meeting, that is no.
That's for. That, yeah, that's why he's speaking on.
That's from Jer- Jeremy Schindler. Now, the the Parks and Rec board is going to pick this raise up. And everybody, uh, Jeremy Schindler wasn't here, but he wrote a letter. Uh, Charlie Koo wasn't here, but he called in, and he's in favor of it, and the rest of the board, the ones that was here yesterday. Is in favor, and they voted to give her a five thousand dollar raise. Now, the five thousand dollars does not come out of our budget, it comes out of Parks and Rec.
So I just, at the end of the year, I'll just build them the five thousand on top of what we already built on?
Yeah.
Who is that?
I'll.
And she had, I will say one thing, she's, she's increased uh, Parks and Rec's income. But she, it's doubled over the last few years, it has actually doubled.
And, sorry, and some of the things we've done in parks, so for example, cabin rentals.
Yeah.
Their revenue's up to thirty two thousand, we used to have over ten grand a year in expenses, and even with the remodel last year, we only had ten, like. The, because of the online booking system, we've moved to coded lock, they used to drive to the cabins every single day. And switch keys and clean, and we stopped doing that, we put a coded lock box on, and now they only go up once or twice a week. So like, expenses have reduced greatly, and bookings have increased just on the cabin side.
And she's in the process of starting a fake, a fake.
A website.
A website, I'll get it right, I didn't mean fake.
Basically.
Yeah, fake book.
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, uh, it was a website to where you can go on there, and you can. Do about anything without coming here. And it's, it's going to cost the Parks and Rec about sixteen dollars a month to do that, but it's, they 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 want to do it, because it's going to increase things. It's going to make it better. So, uh. If you're in favor of this raise, and the next thing we need to determine, or whatever you want to do, so.
Parks and Rec's already gave it.
Parks and Rec, no, it had to be approved through us, but the Parks and Rec's in favor, they're going to furnish the money.
So Jason, so you understand, because the way we have it set up is weird. So Cody does report to the Parks and Rec board, but she also doesn't, because all the Parks and Rec staff. Because all the parks and rec staff salary comes from commission funds, so the parks board does not actually fund the positions that take care of the parks. They reimburse the county, and right now, it's like fourteen thousand a year or something.
Now, I think it's only like ten thousand.
Well, it's ten, plus Jimmy got a raise several years ago.
Okay.
Yeah, so it might be twelve or thirteen.
But her portion, yeah.
So she does report to her board?
Quarter of her salary is all they replace right now.
Well, this five thousand will come out portion.
That too, yeah, but right now, they're only like reimbursing a quarter for salary.
Their employees act, the, the parks and rec employees actually report to the commission, but the parks and rec board controls the hotel motel tax and technically oversees the parks. It's confusing like everything else.
Yeah, so do I hear a motion for, for this, so move.
I second it.
And I approve that also, and that's five thousand, right, now, that's the next question I wanna bring up, when, when does, when, when would be the best, this going to affect?
We just did payroll for January first, but the next pay, we can do an adjustment, so if you wanted it as of January first, same with Doug. I mean, we can do them both January first, and just do an adjustment on the next pay.
What's you guys, what's your thoughts, gentlemen?
What did the parks and rec board wanna do, did they wanna go back on January first?
They didn't, they.
What's going to the base pay?
It's, yeah, they, I don't think they discussed that, I don't remember them saying when, but I think Cody would like for it to go back on January, which I understand.
Yeah, she, Kim actually hasn't finished, I think she didn't finish payroll in the morning, so she could actually do it to this payroll, which would be the April first.
Oh, she can do January one.
Yeah, I was thinking she did it today, but she didn't do it in the morning.
I'll make a motion, we make it effective, for both of them, January, toward the end of January one.
I second, and I approve that also, okay, she'll be happy with that, so well done, I hope.
Okay, nine-one-one data room.
This is terrible, meeting to ask for money anyway.
Yeah, really, that's what I was just sitting here thinking, I'm like, oh, man.
Come back anytime.
Bye, Jerry.
See ya.
Just remember the number two. That's cabins.
Thank you. Probably wouldn't notice. I got this because Jerry has it, always forget everything.
Jerry, you don't want anything else till the end?
No, I take it.
Okay, you didn't even hack us or anything.
You've already spent too much money on this.
It's terrible.
It brings back memories.
See you guys, great job.
Okay, so, not, these are both nine-one-one expenses, um, one is a half-to-half. Um, we have whole building UPS, okay, so obviously, that whole building is on a generator, power goes out, generator takes over the whole building. Um, the dispatch center has a UPS, like, obviously, here, we use the whole workstation UPSs, we have the large UPSs that are wired into the electrical system, I need new batteries. Um, we haven't put new ones in, and.
Since you built them?
No, 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 we've replaced them, um, but I was talking to Jerry France the other day, and he told me I'm not replacing them often enough. Because they're expensive, but, um, it's five thousand six hundred dollars.
But that comes out of nine-one-one.
It comes out of nine-one-one, it's not really optional, like, we have to have, like, my batteries have to work when power goes out.
I make a motion, we replace the batteries at nine-one-one center. I'll second it, and I approve that also.
And here's the second thing that is optional, that cable vendor, when I had him in, um, so, next fiscal year. God willing, um, because it's been a thing going through some of this stuff, and I haven't started talking about it in commission meetings yet, I've just been doing backend work. One of, migrating from traditional enhanced nine-one-one service to next generation nine-one-one, which means all nine-one-one calls would be delivered voice over IP. So, over, and as you know, um, basically, they come in digitally rather than through the traditional frontier network, we don't have frontier anymore. One of.
What is it, to procure a hefty bill?
It is, however, the next gen will also be very expensive. It's, it won't be a money saver, um, but it will be more reliable, it has more redundant paths, you're not relying on so many parts that were installed in nineteen eighty. Um, that get water and don't get locked, and there's a lot of things wrong with how nine-one-one works now, um, not with us, but in the frontier network. Long story short, we're gonna have to bring, have to bring in a lot of additional network equipment into, um, our, so nine-one-one is set up, so we have a server room, and then we have electrical room, where all of our network stuff actually comes in. This is, um, what our network room, where everything comes in presently, looks like. Um, and I have to, um. Things aren't punched down correctly, the front of the rack, like, everything's not a consistent UPS, we literally have like three or four of the little UPSs, because that building, that room's not UPS. Um, it's, the whole room is a mess, there's no room for more switches on the rack, and we're gonna need to be able to do all of that, um. So, I spoke to the cable vendor about getting it all cleaned up for me, um, putting in a new rack, re-terminating everything, so re-punching down all of the existing cat five cable that's in the building. So it's a new modular patch panel, it's three rack mount battery backup, so we're not relying on the ones I literally go to Walmart and buy. Um, modular patch panel, patch cables, um, and he's going to, we already have a four-post rack up there, he's just gonna move it in there and take this one out. Um, it's five thousand three hundred and sixty-eight dollars to redo that room, um, and there's some stuff he's gonna take off the wall for me, he's gonna rerun some stuff. I realize it's expensive, but, um, that room is really, really, really important to what we do. Again, it's nine-one-one, it, it's nine-one-one funds, yeah.
I do realize nine-one-one is also a taxpayer money, you always.
Yeah, I know that, but I know what our budget.
It's on your budget too.
Yeah, I know. I understand, I know all that, but I just want, because we've spent a lot of money here out of ours tonight.
It's all yours.
Well, I know, but there, that goes in up there, that's a little bit different.
But that room is extremely important, it doesn't, and again, this is not something that has to be dying, but when I start transitioning that building in our service to next generation. Um, it's gonna make the transition a lot better, and it's gonna give us more reliability, I mean, it is an important thing.
When's your transition going to take?
We haven't done RFPs yet, we're just doing the background, because there's gotta be redundant fibers coming, not redundant, it's actually separate fibers with different backend providers, and so there's some stuff like that we're working on, um. But hopefully, I'm hoping next fiscal year, we'll be able to at least start process, I've been working with AT&amp;T.
So you're working with next gen?
Next gen nine-one-one.
Do you have anything with them already?
No, 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 it's not a vendor, it's a service, so it'll actually, it'll be, end up being through AT&amp;T, probably, I can't say that for sure, I gotta put on RFP, but AT&amp;T resells, we wanna do cloud-based Viper. I've been working with them in our sales, and getting backend stuff, just trying to figure out what the possibilities are and stuff, but.
I was thinking use them in the past, but.
There probably was someone named next gen at some point, but, yeah, it's just, it's not a company, it's, uh.
So voice over IP would be, um, it's all cell service, and there will be no hardwiring coming into the building?
No, it's all hardwired, but it all comes in, so, um, it all comes in over fiber though.
Okay.
So rather, basically, it's. It's analog versus digital, um, so it's like a traditional copper line, your voice is a data packet in one way, but it's an analog transmission in the other, so everything comes through data. It basically is what it changes to, it just takes it out of the traditional, like, ham and truck network, and moves everything into the cloud. Which is also like why we've done some of the preliminary stuff, putting a Starlink in the building, and doing some different things like that, to be prepared.
So, the transition, then, I mean, you're not going to be doing the transition kind of thing, you're just, you're just trying to get ready for this?
Yeah.
Or is the room's a disaster?
And it's much easier to do things, you know, in small chunks rather than just trying to figure it out.
So it doesn't turn into the line right now?
Yeah, that's, well, actually, I have other quotes to do other things in the building, but I'm not ready for this yet, because we're gonna do some cloud-based solutions.
How much was that, you mean?
Fifty-three hundred.
Five thousand three hundred and sixty.
Oops, I had missed, I got dyslexic, five, three, six, eight, I had five, six, three.
I'll make a motion, we approve it. I second it.
The nine-one-one has been very financially stable, like, we, we watch only closely, and.
We're checking.
Yeah.
So can I say something, you know, just because it's, I have to say it. Lauren said a thing about how important nine-one-one was, you need to remember how important our cops are too. Nine-one-one's important to keep up the upkeep of the building and stuff, to keep them warm, but these guys are here asking for raises and stuff, and they are very important to our community. And I, and I know you have to wait on the budget and stuff, but that's just something to think about.
That is something we think about, this is, this is a one-time cost, that's a cost that's gonna continue going up and up and up down the road.
Right.
So that's.
And they got eight thousand dollar raises last budget cycle, they just spent a quarter of a million dollars on in-car cameras for them, they bought them new weapons tonight.
And that's not counting the installation of those cameras.
But without those guys, our command.
I agree, we take, they're taken care of, they're all taken care of, because I know what they deal with.
Oh, I, I know, I'm sure you do, your boys are in there, I understand that, I'm just, I'm just saying, I understand that, but if we don't take care of our people.
Yep, I agree.
What is our community gonna become? I mean, we already have the drug issue really bad, you know?
Yeah, I agree with what you're saying, and that anything, since I've been in here, it's been ten years, and anything they've come and asked for, we've pretty much give it to them.
In the last ten years, which is up their overtime budget.
Yeah.
A hundred and fifty thousand for the next six months.
Yes.
Right, yeah. I just.
They're taken care of.
I mean, I totally agree with keeping up with nine-one-one, that's, that's very important, you gotta do that, and you gotta keep up with times, you know? Computers move quickly, all that stuff moves quickly, we gotta do that.
We're looking.
But we gotta have the people that's gonna be out there that, when, when those calls come in.
And, and we're also looking at the, the salary raises, so that we can retain the officers longer.
Right.
There anything that bothers me, and I'm not gonna lie to you, I'm gonna tell you right up front, the way it looks, we're looking at about a hundred and thirty thousand dollars for insurance increase. A year.
Yeah.
That there's one harvest, big time.
And this is the thing, when it comes to the insurance, if you guys decide not to pay for our insurance the way you are, then we're gonna be asking for increases in rates to cover the cost. That you need to balance out, what, what's gonna be better?
I agree with what you're saying there.
Yeah, worse than that, we lose people because the only reason they're here is for the insurance.
Yeah, that's absolutely.
They're not, they're not helping us.
And that's why with the insurance, we've done things, like when I reached out to the broker, and we did the HRA, and that saved us well over a hundred thousand dollars a year, just by us. Doing the HR and things like that, I mean, we'll keep doing everything we can to control costs, but.
But everybody's insurance goes up every year, I mean, it just went up over this one, you know, it's just. I just, I don't like insurances.
You get older, you gotta have it.
Well, you gotta have it, but.
Gotta have it.
Get like, the other end, and you would like to be the one on the other end collecting the check.
Well, my electric bill took a pretty good increase.
Oh, yeah, but it hurts.
Well, my garage is doubled, little more than double.
Your garage?
My garage, yeah.
Oh, the electric in your garage?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, but anyway, it is what it is, all right, let's move along, Burnt Fire Department.
Charlie Fire Department has this assumption that the county gets a significant break on buying trucks for number four. So they're asking, which I don't think we do, but they're asking if they, we can buy the truck, and then they would reimburse, first us for the truck. So I don't think that's.
Um, there, we do, we do give a substantial discount, however, they would be eligible for it in the same way we are, because they're a government purchaser.
Okay.
Um, but we do absolutely get a discount, they sell it to us at, um, well, there is those, like, people always talk about state bid, there are no state bid vehicles anymore, um. Purchasing hasn't done one in a couple of years, because no dealership will commit to a price, I'm hoping that comes back around soon.
For Timbrook told them, told them that, um, if you have the county buy it, it'll be cheaper.
So well, then, if, I can't imagine that, I can, actually, I can email or call Brian and ask why they can't just do that, but I don't see why we couldn't do that for them, but I don't understand why they wouldn't be able to sell to a fire department.
Yeah, yeah, I don't understand that either.
I don't either.
But if we're buying it, then our name had to stay on the title? And does it come out of our insurance?
Yeah, we need to do some checking on this before we approve anything.
Yeah, I agree. Did Robbie just ask, they have the.
Yeah, I guess that's true, because they have the dealership titles there, like.
Yeah, yeah. Ronnie's one of the, they got the thirty-eight thousand to buy it.
Could you talk to, uh, Timbrook and see why they can't get the same discount?
Um, Brian, Brian, talk to Brian. Not gonna be a quick turnaround, but I can talk to Brian or Angelo. What are they buying, they can have two fifty, three fifty, one fifty. Yeah, we'll follow up with that. Yeah, I can definitely follow up, I'll try to get you, um, I travel tomorrow and Thursday, and then Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, the next week, and then Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, following here, so I'll.
We have insurance cards for, um, AJ, for the vehicle.
Yeah, John came and picked him up. They expire in July, he's had them for months. Oh, you mean for the? Oh, no, they can really just make a copy of them, they're all the same.
They're all the same?
Every insurance, yeah, they don't put vehicles on them, they just give us a body search insurance, yeah, but it's absolutely been added to the policy, I did check on that.
Okay, we picked up the tags today as well.
Okay.
We had the tags.
Okay. Check with the actual Brian.
Okay, what, uh, commission personnel, you wanna go into the executive session?
Yeah, truly, there won't be a decision out of that, you just wanna wait until the end, so that you can get the meeting, but.
Okay, there's, I don't know where it's developed.
Okay, there's nothing else? Somebody got any comments? Liz, you got anything? You wanna give it a report?
Oh, yeah. Okay, so Joel and I submitted to the ethics commission the contract exemption for, um, R and R communications, to be able to do the cruiser upfitting. That was, it was lying there, I swear, um, we submitted that the day after, or the next day after the last meeting. Um, hoping they would put it on their February agenda, so we didn't have to wait, I got that letter yesterday, the, the letter that Jason has yesterday, um, they will review it on March sixth. Um, I have talked to the sheriff, he was going to try to put some pressure on them to review it sooner, but I feel sure that they are gonna do exactly what they're doing, it'll be March sixth. Um, so, I look for, I don't know why they need an additional month unless. With the Anvil's forty contract exemption I did years ago, there was a ton of follow-up stuff I had to do, but this is much more cut and dry than that Anvil's forty contract, that was a recurring hundred and some thousand dollar.
So, it's just for the, uh.
The cruise outfits. The cameras were good, those are, Roger's doing those.
Oh, you're talking about putting the logos and stuff on them all day?
No, that's done too, this is for the lights, the radios.
Last one being for the cruise.
Oh, yeah. That's healthy, yeah.
And we won't get a decision on that till March sixth?
You know, March sixth will have a decision, but that's the, I can't, we submitted less than two days after last meeting, I can't do more than that.
No, I, I'm, you understand that.
Um, what's your thoughts on that?
Can we wait that long?
So. Joel and I talked about it yesterday, and he said they're still waiting on a couple of things anyways, um, but. I mean, that's ultimately your all's call-ish, I guess, um.
If we decided to go with the, the New Jersey company, is that the other company?
You went with another contract, the exemption's not necessary, that's correct.
And we can get it done faster.
In theory, I don't know how long their scheduling's out or anything, but with this, we do have to wait till March sixth.
How long's each car been sitting there, you remember when we got them?
In the summer.
I know it was back on, some late summer fall, I didn't know.
We got like the first two in maybe July or.
Was it June early?
We got two, and then we got, it was freaking hot, recall, we brought two O two here, I know that, I don't remember.
Yeah, we got it same time, that's about the same time, that's right.
No, well, we got, we probably got the last one in October, they brought them at different times, and one was a couple of months after the others, they brought some earlier than that for sure. They brought some earlier than that for sure.
Some kind of concern, we have this other company. Uh, one of my concerns is warranty and the quality of stuff that the guys are gonna be putting on for what we're getting of stuff, so.
We're giving them the stuff and they.
They put it on.
So the warranty, and that's what, all of this, I sent everything to the Ethics Commission. The warranty is the same. They warranty their workmanship forever. However, it's the turnaround of getting someone to actually fix it. And if they take it to Roger's house and he fixes it, then they, from that point forward, don't warranty it. And that's, that's the issue with it. I'm not saying one way or the other, but that, that is where that lies.
Yeah, that is one of my concerns, though, we gotta wait on this other company to come fix it. Even if it's just a blown fuse and they change out the blown fuse, then they can say that the warranty's void. What you guys wanna do with this? Oh, we're still waiting on stuff.
It was July. My emails with the chat started in June because they were coming.
Probably almost, so, eight months, is that right?
Right.
Except the vehicles that sit.
Well. Hey, because the current sheriff was concerned about having to do this every time. But what really needs to happen in the future is the day we order vehicles, we need to quote their outfit and submit a contract exemption.
Yes.
This didn't get submitted until this month. So truly, this isn't on the Ethics Commission. It is because they're not getting to us until March, but it's more on us that it's been this long. Um, in the future, I told Joel, we will absolutely one hundred percent the day those times are ordered, submit for our contract exemption and then before, because he's like, oh, we're gonna have to do this every time. It's gonna delay them and we can have the contract exemption issued if, if they issue it. Um, that's what I told the sheriff yesterday too. There is absolutely no guarantee that they will issue this. I don't know that they will or that they won't, um, but you can't truly predict that, um. But in the future, we will submit these much, much earlier and when the titles show up, the exemption will either have been denied or approved and we can go straight to upfitting. Like, all of that stuff should have been sitting here, like those things that, you know, that, that everything should have been ordered much sooner.
Well, I think we just wait and see what they're, you know, see what they say. We're waiting on, like I said, we're waiting on materials anyway.
Cause he said like the dog boxes aren't in, well, it's only one dog box. It's only one. It's gonna be a game night. Um, I know the light bars are sitting in their lobby, but basically they're waiting once a month and every day, so.
Okay.
Oh, that's all, sorry. Um, there's that. Since Jason's new and actually I don't know that I've ever talked to Dutch about it either. I'm not gonna go over all of this. Um, but you know, my other job is the county's emergency manager. We've had a lot of discussions about like commissions responsibilities and liability. Um, I had Rachel put that together for you all. That's just a hack of saying what your responsibilities are um, in a disaster, what you're liable for, all that good stuff. Reading materials for another day. Um, but wanted to give that to you. She took some time to put that together for me so we could pass that out. Is that something? They don't go over in training.
Yeah.
And maybe it doesn't, it might not as much here, um. But that's something the County Commission Association is failing commissioners on because you all are, you might have an emergency manager, but at the end of the day, just like everything, you appoint me to it, but it's, I'd get fired when you're still on.
Have they had any, uh, workshops on this? I know I went to a couple, but it's been a long time. Sandy's supposed to be working on getting something together.
Is there supposed to do the, the G, like the instant command for elected officials class? Um, the next thing I had was just as an F Y I, um, going to Stonewall tomorrow and Thursday, that's paid for by Emergency Management, the state. Um, Rachel, Eileen and I will all be there the next two days. Next week I'm taking a class in wheeling, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, and then the following week is mineral county days, so I will not be here very much. I'll obviously still be available, um, and then I plan on taking off the last two weeks of February, just like I did last year and like I did the year before. Um, so that's just as an FYI, so you all know what's going on with that. Um, David Rucker, the L E P C Chair, wanted me to share this class with you again. They had to reschedule it because a lot of stuff happened. They had to reschedule it. It's the, um, you can see what it is, railcar incident response for crude ethanol and other flammable liquids. I'm gonna be very honest with you, um, it has nothing to do with you, um, I don't look for any of you to be putting out train fires anytime soon. However, if you wanna take the class and find it to be interesting, you're certainly welcome to, um, it is absolutely free. Um, and lunch is provided if any of you wish to take that. Already told you the blinds have been ordered. Uh, the Comcast franchise agreement, I, we've talked about that, I've brought it up a couple of times. I was finally able to dig into that because they reached out probably two years ago and said it was time to renew. Um, and then I've tried reaching out to them numerous times and just don't want answers, um. But I looked at the agreement and found out why. It's because it automatic, so it's, you guys signed it for fifteen years, not you guys, fifteen years ago. Um, but then it automatically renews for three, five year terms. So the franchise agreement is actually good for another fifteen years, um. I literally just got today, so I didn't go on the agenda. I read it when we were in that executive session. Uh, Chantel's franchise agreement, I guess, is either expiring or needs renewed as well. They sent a letter, um, I'll put it on the next commission agenda, um. Cornell State of Cabling, we talked about. The phone system for the courthouse, and I need to send out a notice to the electors as well, will be moving Monday. You guys already approved the cost of it. All of that equipment is moving Monday. It's moving Monday morning at seven thirty and in theory, the phones shouldn't be down for the normal workday. It is possible that something could happen and they don't come up till ten thirty. Um, but that I do need some notes out, but I wanted you guys to know about that, um. We were tentatively gonna move it this week, but.
Need to worry for border utilization.
I don't have that on. I didn't put border utilization on my calendar. I don't know.
Roger, can you put February?
So.
What, what, uh? What day was it?
Monday.
Yeah, there's, yeah, there's.
Nine o'clock, nine o'clock.
What time is the border review on twenty first? Twenty first of February? Yeah, I didn't write the time down.
Uh, nine o'clock.
I kinda figured it was in the morning because the others was midday and in the evening. I figured it was.
And I don't have the official correspondence on it yet, but the auditor's office called me yesterday. The audit's going to be thirty three thousand dollars, um. That's what it always says, um, but I get the letter of engagement. I assume it's okay to sign. It, it's not optional, so I told them the price was fine and we would put it, we'd get it, but I don't put our engagement or any of those documents yet, so. Unless anyone's supposed to know, but it's like thirty three thousand dollars for our annual audit. But the auditor's office does it and it's not like, it's not an optional thing. It's like, they call and say, is this price okay with you? And a lot of these days I'm gonna tell Karen, no, it's not okay. Now what do we do about that? Because.
Yeah.
They're gonna say, take it and shove it.
Or a negotiation area, Luke, yeah.
No, it's the price of it.
Okay, we need to go cheaper.
Yeah, I guess I can try that, but, uh.
I do it every time.
That, maybe that's all I got.
Just starting. We didn't do all the, all your meetings and stuff that you've been to and. Yes, um.
The fourteen, we had our commission meeting, January fifteenth, those are the Timont City Council. Also fifteenth going to New Creek, following to your fire department meetings. Um. Was gonna be A, Annex over there, the new office, office building. That was Ken went through my employment stuff. Then I met with Joel and Jill, walked through the building with them. January sixteenth was also the building commission meeting, one o'clock here. Seventeenth walked through the courthouse. Again, um. January twenty first, Burlington Fire Department, was with them. January twenty second, budget review, uh, with the Sheriff's Department. Uh, the, the twenty second, uh, was the livestock association. And the twenty fourth went to the James Isaac House dinner. That's it.
Are you on the workforce development board? Did you just take Jerry's place on that? Cause I've got a document for everyone's on that now, which again, I, that might be, so. Okay, move on. I just, I got, I wanna make sure it was you.
All right, I had a solid waste meeting. I was at, uh, uh, Region Eight Planning Development, uh, meeting with the State Auditor's Office. And I had a parks and rec meeting and I attended the Fountain and Fire Department banquet. And I had a meeting with Sarah's house, um, about some of this. A lot of people don't realize how much money is being spent for people that don't take care of their kids. We don't have a children problem in, in West Virginia. We got a parenting problem in West Virginia. I can show you one family before their eight kids is over eighteen years old. We're going, you taxpayers is gonna have about a million and a half dollars and go raising. Something's gotta be done. And I've contacted Rick Taylor, Brandon, Randy Smith, and we're trying to get a meeting set up in Charleston, a couple of, of the legislators is wanting to get something done, but they don't know where to go. How, they, they don't know what to do because they're not getting the back. That's about it. Right, yeah, yes, sir. Uh, since the last commission meeting, um, the fourteenth, I was at Ridgely's Town Hall meeting. Wednesday fifteenth, Mineral County Planning Commission. Uh, six, what's that?
That's that building vision, sorry.
Um. And then. Uh, was that the work session on the twenty second, had livestock association meeting. I was there with Jason introducing to everybody. And now we was at the Fountain Fire Department banquet, all three, or men and Rogers was at the Fire Department banquet on Saturday. Uh, I also spoke to the lady, I spoke to Noah Weber of the D E P about their property in Ridgely and he has not heard anything from them. And I spoke to the lady that lives in the property. She's the, the property's in the name of the two boys. And the mom and dad still live there. The two boys are in their twenties, I guess. I'm not sure, real sure how old they are. But I talked to the mom and she had just got down to the hospital. She was on oxygen and she sounded absolutely terrible and I told her I would call her back in a couple of weeks when she got feeling better and I had to go. Um, but, uh, that was last week or a week and a half ago. I talked to her on the phone. So that's, of course, everything's covered in snow now. Other than today, I read by and I noticed there's some more junk laying in there on top of the snow, so they're just bringing in more stuff. Which is really disappointing. Um. And then. Is it all, I was at that, that work session too. I forgot that. Yeah, all three.
That you talking about the, um, that property that, up in the carpet now or?
Yeah, it's on Ridgely, right outside of Ridgely.
Right outside of Ridgely. That's the one you guys were gonna clean up and stuff, but now they're dragging more stuff in.
Yeah, they were all favor cleaning it up. And then when I got the D E P guy in there to take care of it, it was gonna be no cost to them. He was going to even have a compact contractor come in and and gather everything up and haul it out of there. And then they go, well, I wanna keep this, wanna keep that, I wanna keep this. And what it comes down to, he doesn't have trash. I wanna make this clear. They were, stuff that gets put in a paper, uh, no offense Liz, um, actually it wasn't Liz either, but it was talking about trash being altered place. It's not trash per se as far as refuse and, uh, bags and stuff laying around. There is some there, but it is inside of old cars or trailers. And according to D E P, it's inside of a closed container, so it's no different than having it in your trash can. So it's not blowing around, it's not getting tore up or there's not a bunch of critters running around, but there is a lot of and I'll use the word junk loosely, where it is, it might be junk to you or me or certain people, but other people, it's stuff that they have and it's stuff that, you know, it's, it's their stuff. Um, some of it's just scrap metal they could take and get some money out of. But the D E P has a problem with it. They're, they consider it an open dump because it is not organized. So if you just take stuff that's scattered out on the ground and there's no organization to it, or they think there's no organization to it, they consider it as an open dump. This is the way it was explained to me. But you could take the same stuff and organize it, put it into certain piles or stack it up. I mean, it's like he has a, he has a bunch of, uh, lumber there and the lumber there was all piled up and he's saving it because he wants to build a building with it. I'm not even gonna get into that, but the D E P guy said, okay, so if this isn't, this is a dump to me because it's just all piled up and haphazardly stacked and everything. You need to stack it up neatly. If you had it stacked up neatly, I wouldn't say anything about it. So you could take the same stuff and put it in and do a nice pile or do a nice, do stack it up so that it does look organized. And then it would be fine. But if that was a mess, that D E P cleaned it up for you.
What's that?
If that was a junk, something out there, D E P cleaned it up for you. Yeah, D E P would come in and clean it up. If they, if, if they would let them, D E P will go in. And he's got a bunch of flesh. Flesh it. Flesh it.
I never seen one.
Um, but there's a lot of trailers there too, old campers and stuff like that. I need to talk to you about that.
Okay.
Uh, cause there's questions about if it's, if they're actually being assessed on those campers that are there.
We can look that up.
So, but there's, uh, several campers, I, well, I say several, there's five, there's probably five or six campers there. There's another living trailer there, but it's all packed full of.
They're gonna use it up for storage?
Stuff, yes.
Yeah.
And they're using it all for storage. He said, oh, this is storage, oh, this is storage. And, no, and, and honestly, you look at them, you just, there's just stuff out and you know, it's, it's hard to go in and just make them clean it up. Um, you know, part of it is, we live in a free country, we're in a free state and you know, they do with their property what they wanna do and this is my feelings, but this is honestly my feelings about. You do with your property what you wanna do as long as you're not hurting somebody else.
Right.
And what somebody else deems as disgraceful or, or a terrible property is that makes you person reducing the entirety of it. Um, and I told you originally, I said, I said, here's, for example, I, I don't like the color green. So how can I go through and say, oh, this green, this house is green and it looks disgusting. You need to change it. You can't do that. It's, it's, I know that's an extreme example, but in reality, that's, that's what we're kinda dealing with. To those people, they're fine with it. They don't have a problem.
Right.
Um, you know, there's been claims of riots. We've had the health department down there and you go down and, and if, if there's a riot issue, you would see little trails. If there's a rodent issue, you would see little trails through the tall grass and stuff like that. You don't see that. Um, they do have a couple of dogs and some chickens there or some roosters or something like that, but, um, they're all contained. They all stay, dogs stay in the house and, uh, and are in the trailer and, and it just. At one, when one of the boys was living in one of the trailers and the health department didn't make him get out of it because the trailer was not hooked up to public water or sewer. And he said, you know, you can have it sitting there, but you can't live in it without water and hooked up to sewer. You have to live in that main trail. So if a trailer's sitting there not hooked up to water and sewer, they cannot live in it. You cannot live in it. You obviously go camping in it, but, and I don't know what that determination is between camping and living. You know, but.
Do they have vehicles?
Yes.
They do.
I think I've seen one vehicle there. There is other vehicles there, but they're not running, but there is one vehicle that is licensed and.
Yeah, well, really, honestly, it doesn't matter if they're running or not, as long as, if they're titled to them and they're fixable. They have to be on their personal property.
It's a fixable.
Okay, so if they're not fixable, they're just junk vehicles.
Yeah. But anyway, it's just, um, I mean, there's, there's some other things that, that I think can be done. I'm trying to give them an opportunity to. That I think can be done. I'm trying to give them an opportunity to take care of it yourself. Without, without going in, I, I know they've been, Ridgely has, has pushed them, pushed them and, and. Uh, when I first went there. They were very standoffish to me until I, until I finally convinced them I was there, I wanted to help them. Wanted to try to get them some help because of that reprogrammed through D E P. And was trying to get them some help and trying to get them. And it was all for it, like I said at first, and then they started backtracking. Backpedal a little bit, so. But we're in there and we've had a pretty good winter so far. Um, snowstorm, the cold weather, stuff like that, they've got, they're now, they're able to do anything right now with it.
Okay, nobody can, this guy questions?
We got W two's and ten ninety nine's done, so they're being distributed. You guys got yours. And then. I think several meetings ago, did I not mention buying new computers?
You mentioned it, yeah.
Several, okay. Um, my computers are having issues. I think we may have already approved it at the previous meeting, but I think the amounts are getting more. Um, cause I'm replacing all seven of them as ten thousand.
And I will tell you, your computers for sure need replaced because I keep making Jenna limp along with hers. Um, I haven't ordered her one. But, um, it's almost in the world.
Yeah. Click on something on my computer and go do something else, waiting for it to come back up.
Have you ordered it?
No, I have the foot right here. Ten thousand, twenty seven dollars, I said, that's seven computers. And that's replacing all the computers in the front office, the two newest computers that seem to be doing okay, I'm going to be taking them out to the election area.
You mean like you can't get them from another department?
That is something I do not, actually for the election, I usually do use all my.
Did they take the old ones and straighten?
No, nobody wants them.
We take them to state and this is what they do.
You talked to our bandage computer? Uh, you don't get that out of me. They're down there.
Knows what we need and, um. They know, there's a difference between buying just a PC at Walmart and buying a professional.
Oh, I know. Trust me, I know.
Yeah, and they know exactly what we need, and also the lifespan that I will get out of my computers.
I'd say they're seven years old, they're seven, eight years old.
But you don't get that out of state.
Oh, no. Yes, we not.
That, that came from them, that was six year old. And they changed a couple of things and it.
Several times. And they had cleaned them up and done things to them and left them alone.
I'm talking about work, work changes, like inside. You're talking about chips and then work drugs. That was only two hundred and fifty bucks.
I'm thinking that we actually initially got a price approval, but I don't think it, I should get, I don't think it was a percent. So I don't think it was quite that much.
And global stuff is more expensive, but it comes with, like, they have Microsoft Office and all that stuff already when it comes. Honestly, I haven't, but I'll probably end up just ordering one for general, Amazon. I've been buying, um. Lenovo all in ones nine one one and they're like six hundred and fifty bucks.
And I will also have another expense coming out of my budget. I will have to buy additional roller shelving. Um, because it's not getting, putting anything on the top due to the way the, the, the design was worked out for my office. And my vault, uh, like I said, I have, I quit counting two hundred and seven books that don't fit in the new vault that came out of the old vault. Um, so I am about to put shelving down the interior walls of the office. Um, and then part of the high density, I'm also about to put shelving in there. So additional invoices will be coming in for that shelving. Those are just a couple of things. At the work session, they had talked about the E M O. Uh, I told, um, Joel, I gave him a P O to actually submit that invoice. Um, I think with everything you had tonight, I maybe forgot to leave it, so. No, if you guys are good at proving the P O without. Because you actually didn't see the.
Oh, for the ammo.
For the E M O. Oh, wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute, there is, okay. Yeah, I was gonna say, cause he had it, okay. I made a note to myself to get it and then.
Let's see what the team in H S E has in the bill. For front, front views. All right, it's courthouse.
There isn't any bills, so you guys looked at all the elected bills.
Oh, this thing, yeah. Go max is coffee machines. Coffee machines. Geritorial supplies, paper towels, so. I have no idea what it's for.
There's a description inside. Anytime you have a question about a bill, you can always look at the E M O side.
Um, it's on. The, uh, it's the lightweight case.
Oh, I forgot to mention the. They did start installing.
That's cool news.
You know, I don't know that I like that this is the end any better. Cause we're at the point where I'm already.
I don't like it at all.
Watching you put your initials on stuff.
I don't like it at all.
You can't say it, huh?
Yeah, they, where's that? Uh, where's Carl going to do? Carl will be at nine one one.
And the key, they're always in Aliens box outside of the, outside of the work.
Good evening.
See you, Liz.
Would it be anybody there in the morning, six thirty?
This that's.
I know. But I thought, no, where's?
There's, you know where Aliens offices is, there's a box and one outside.
Just like you go into the second door with the.
When you go into the lobby, you take a left and it's that off, but that first door, and there's just a black, like, mesh basket there, and it'll be sitting in that. I think I told you that bar. And she's like, I guess we're taking your truck to Stonewall then. Oh, yeah, we are. Well, we, no, no, it's fine. Wait, taking the truck is not a problem at all.
You're worried?
Oh, hey, Roger sound, maybe we should take the truck and we'll throw him in the bed, yeah.
Yeah, that might not be a bad idea. I don't know why I hit something. I, I'm not sure.
Good luck with training.
Martinsburg, uh.
The Martinsburg. The Bridgeport one probably is. Bridgeport until February. Are you sure that tomorrow is not the registration deadline? I don't know, I, I don't. Working, I'll take, Eileen and I are going to go to Charles, probably, actually, we register Cody too, because. If her and I are going to sit through it, Cody's not going to go back to the hotel room now.
Where's she going to?
Network, when we all go to Charleston for Mineral County Day, Eileen and I are going to take the budget train. I'm like, we're not going to let Cody go back to the hotel room and enjoy herself. Do you want to come with us? So. Of course, small yoga.
I think he runs fifty.
Oh, wow, he did, yeah.
Martinsburg. Workshop January twenty ninth, eight thirty to eleven thirty. The deadline was twenty first. Bridgeport is February the twenty fifth, the deadline is the eighteenth.
Well, they always make you register, but I feel sure if you show up, it won't be that big of a deal. We're at Martinsburg. Well, we, no, her.
You have.
I'm gonna say you already registered.
Yeah, you got the register. Yeah, I only took area registrations the last meeting.
Shelby coming, I know, I was gonna say Kim, but.
Is, who, who's going there for you all, which is him?
I mean, Kim, but I'm gonna say Kim and one of them.
Will it be possible for you all as your log is still looking? Didn't he come from Ohio?
Oh, he went to Ohio, yeah, yeah. Oh, I thought he was the one at the B's house.
Oh, no, 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 no. I'm sorry, it's still.
Why did we need that car? I don't know.
That's not my car, I have no idea. We really need to get to the gate, we need to get some fence up there. Law, I know he's working on that, but my mom wants to use part of it, any of them, scout right back there now, they're three murder parts.
Well, they were supposed to check with V C I, but.
I think. Doll's going.
Is, I put fish in there.
No, that whole inside's, oh, that other stuff there.
But truly, that inside, if it got organized, there'd be a lot more space.
There's so much furniture in there right now.
That's another issue we gotta watch. This one tires for the sheriff's.
That's its honorations. So the special will present those for any clerical changes or duplicates. And there's, in the middle of the page, there's an explanation of why it's being exonerated.
But there's, he's the only one.
Right, yeah, correct, Roger's the only one they need.
Yeah. But actually. I hadn't thought about that. I hadn't thought about that. You, you went with that, I thought about that one, technically. Yeah. That's what we saw using duct tape and that's a.
Yo, Roger. I didn't, I didn't even know.
And, and I don't agree with that role, I think it's.
You gotta sign all of it. Sometimes I wonder if it's a smoke coming out of our house. Coldness.
Did you not want to approve that bill or?
Maybe we've already received the. Yeah, and what do you do?
They get two flat tires, you want it one day. We got the first load one, what's the date of that number?
Well, hmm.
Which was.
I think it's the fourteenth, no, it's. Fourteenth.
Okay, cause the trailer had two flat tires.
This is twelve, they bought twelve and one tire.
Got, they got the first loads one, or Monday, and they backed it up. And issued the truck and, uh, trailers.
Hey, mother, looking at the rest of the bills, can you fill out this conflict of interest statement for the workforce film board?
Oh. I need to. There's something we have to file for the Ethics Commission.
Yes, every year you have to do an ethics.
You have none to you?
Financial disclosure.
You should have got something from.
I did. And I haven't done, they sent out, I don't know, I got like three emails in December. And it says you can't do this till January one, and then January one comes, I don't think I got anything.
Just got nine months, but yeah, you don't forget to do that.
Um, and I emailed all three of you, you did see that I sent out, um. A letter to all the fire departments reminding them that their twenty twenty four books have to be reviewed.
That reminds me, that's what I gotta, that was something else I wanted to put on my thing. I got a phone call today from one of the chiefs. Asked me what it was supposed to be and what they were supposed to do and. And I said, what's the paper tell you? Well, it says I have to have my books reviewed. Okay, you have to have your books reviewed. Well, I don't know why, they're at, they're at the auditor now and I'm like, okay, what's the deadline for you? September thirtieth? All right then, I think you're fine.
Oh, no, see, that's the. The auditor reviewed their twenty twenty three books.
Yeah.
So they all have to get their twenty twenty four books reviewed separately.
That's what he told me.
Okay, yeah.
That's, yeah, that's.
Yeah, okay.
Cause he told me that the auditor did go, which I didn't know the auditor was in and went through their stuff.
Yeah, I talked to Kristen last week and she said. They've not issued anything for any of our departments, but they haven't met with the majority of them.
Needed to send some data to them.
There was, yeah. This was, uh, Patterson Creek and they had had. They, they needed, they had to get some papers or something, something, they had to get some papers for the.
Well, and that's why I sent all of that to them.
Well, yeah, it was a, it was an invoice or something like that, that they needed to get or.
Do you remember any vendors that we paid directly? That's for a department because, like, for fountain, we reimbursed the fountain. For the purchases, but I was thinking that, sorry, any vendor that we takes directly to the vendor instead of reimbursing the department. For the benefit of the department. Like the temporal thing, had we done that? So was there any vendors that you didn't think of that we paid direct?
You know, when next meeting. Don't, like, give them their contact information, we'll send you everything. Yes, I wanted to give them plenty of warning, that gives them nine months and actually. As long as the packets were sent out correctly, everything they should need's in there. The M O U they signed, the agreed upon procedures and the letter. Yeah, that's what, I think in the letter I said, what I would recommend is you literally take this to your accountant and say, this is what we. Yeah, that's what, I think in the letter I said, what I would recommend is you literally take this to your accountant and say, this is what we need to do. And then have them help you find the C P A they were writing that.
When I went to Burlington meeting, then I said, hey, this is coming, if you all know what it is, okay. They didn't seem to take anything.
Yeah. Yeah, I think, I don't know that any of the departments are having an issue right now, but I think if we're collecting as much tax dollars as we are, we should that help to give them the books, making sure.
I don't know where that came from. You all want to make your motion, we'll post an executive session and we'll.
Um, do I hear a motion?
No, no. Okay.
Make a motion, pay your bills.
And the purchase order.
And the purchase order.
I second.
And I approve that also. Okay, make a motion, we approve the estates.
I second and I approve that also.
I make a motion, we approve the honorations. That all we need. I make a motion, go in the executive session.
First and now.
Okay, first now, first thing that we need.